Good evening. I have a hammer. Welcome to tonight's meeting of our Ojai Planning Commission for December 16th. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission this evening on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected, of course, to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the Chair. Roll call, Sherry.
Nicklin Logowski, absent. Merk?
Here.
Isabella Nolan?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Jagiello?
Chester, would you lead this? Your pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time we set aside for public communications, and I have before me a few people who would like to speak, the first of which is Deborah Pendry. Welcome, Deborah.
Deborah Pendry, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. We're at 206 North Signal Street. And we wanted to remind the community to mark your calendar for the Green Coalition's eighth annual e-waste collection and recycling event. That happens at the Ojai Community Bank parking lot. That's at 402 West Ojai Avenue. It'll be Saturday, January 9th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The items we take are all the different types of electronics, including handhelds like cell phones and cameras, small appliances, and the rule of thumb is if it has a cord and fits on a counter, we take it, like microwaves, toasters, lamps, wash machines, no. Ink and toner cartridges. We'll be taking all kinds of media, CDs, DVDs, VHS tapes. Yes, they're still coming in. Cassette tapes, floppy disks, those kind of goods. Household batteries and your old holiday lights. What we won't be taking is light bulbs. These are things people bring. Neosporin, thermometers, hazardous waste such as paint chemicals and aerosol cans. So, just a reminder, all of those types of things I just listed are called universal or hazardous waste, and it is illegal to put it into the trash can, so, and dangerous. So, we do need to dispose of them appropriately. And our event is sponsored by the City of Ojai, E.J. Harrison &amp; Sons, and we partner with the Ojai Community Bank and Ojai Valley Directory to bring this each year. And each year, we've gathered 21,000 to 28,000 pounds of just the electronics part each year. So, we fill a semi truck plus. So, it's a big deal, and we thought about all those 300-plus cars that come each year going down to the county hazardous waste program. That's quite a bit of carbon, and they gotta pay 50, excuse me, 65 bucks a car. So, it's good for everybody. Thank you.
Hey, Deborah. Just remind us when that date is, and January 9th, is that what you said?
Yeah, Saturday, January 9th, and OjaiValleyGreenCoalition.org is the website where you can get all the details.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is it Danette or Darnette?
Danette.
Danette?
I'm making plans. My name is Danette Wallace, 226 West Ojai Avenue, number 245. And I am here to speak about affordable housing. I know that's on the agenda, but I'm not going to speak to the specific agenda item today, just in general. I was hoping that you could possibly take it into consideration in the future to consider multi-units on one property. I am part of a group and several groups that are interested in living in community but not living in the same dwelling, having our own dwellings but living on the same property and sharing some common space but having your own living space separate. So, I don't know what all goes into that. I'm sure there's a huge discussion around that, but I'd just like you to know that there are many, many people in Ojai interested in that situation, and it's something that we look to carry forward if we can. So, since you're addressing affordable housing, I feel that it comes under that today. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Diane Squire?
Diane Squire, I live at 703G North Ventura Street, Ojai. I moved here about eight years ago because I was attracted to the idea of a creative, artistic community, and along with that comes affordable housing, especially for creatives. When I moved here, I paid a rent that was reasonable. Eight years ago, now I am at $400 more a month than I was. The apartment managers I rent quote people $700 over what I paid eight years ago. When I try to look for alternative housing in Ojai, I can't find it. I can't find it. And I think if you want to create a community that caters, continues to create, cater to creatives and artists, people who think out of the box and sometimes want to live out of the box, it behooves you to kind of look at things beyond a second unit dwelling under your ordinance, but a bigger picture that allows you to see what other alternatives you can create for housing that are maybe community, that are things like tiny homes, that are yurts, that are park model homes, but open up that box so that people can afford to stay here. If we can't, if we don't, we're in danger of becoming a mini Montecito, and you're going to drive out the people who made this valley and this town special. And I know for me, if I can't find something that fits that bill, I've got to move to Oregon. And I don't want to. I would like to stay here, and I think a lot of people would love to stay and continue to participate in this community. But we're being priced out of the market. I know investors purchased the apartment units I'm living in about three years ago. Prior to that, the owners lived in Ojai, owner builders, and now these are remote investors. The property has gone downhill. They don't care, and they're jacking up the prices. And I think this is a sad commentary on what's happening to Ojai, that it's becoming about the money and not about the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else at this time that would like to address the commission on an item other than what's on tonight's agenda?
I left my name up there.
You did? Oh, go ahead. Please come up and tell us who you are.
Hi. My name is Colleen Tabram. I live at 102.
No, you're not speaking about an item for tonight's agenda, correct? Because you had item number two, and that would be coming up.
I'm talking about the same thing, affordable housing.
Okay.
I live in Ojai. I've lived here for 30 years. I work up at the Ojai Foundation. I've worked up there most of that time. I have roots here and have known people in the community and have raised my children here. I recently went to buy a house and got terrified with the mortgage rates of $2,500 a month. That don't make that much. I would like to be able to buy a tiny home and put it on someone's property legally. Yeah, that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I have no more cards in front of me, so we're going to move on to our public hearing. Actually, we have consent items, and before me, there are none to speak of, I guess. Do we take care of our minutes from our last meeting? Next meeting? Okay. Disclosure of site visits and expertays, I don't know if that's really tonight's agenda.
450 stuff I have in a skate park.
Oh, okay. All right.
I'm familiar with skate park and have not had any expertise contacts.
I am also familiar with the skate park and have had no expertise contacts.
I'm also familiar with the skate park and have had no expertise contacts.
I've been there and visited.
I've been there and had no expertise contact.
Okay. That brings us to our first public hearing item, which is a time extension for Design Review Permit DRP 14-17 for the installation of lighting at the 450 East Ojai Avenue Skate Park. Assessors' parcel number 022-0-140-670. The general plan line use designation of the site is public quasi-public, and zoning classification of the site is public quasi-public. A categorical exemption was prepared for the project when it was approved pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Hear from staff, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, it's pretty simple what's before you tonight. This is an extension for the skate park lighting, and we'll just point out that because the extension comes in after the city's implementation of our cultural resource policy, that staff did reach out to the Native Americans regarding this project, and that they indicated back to us they have no concerns. So, that's the only thing, really, that's different with the processes here in Ojai since the time this was approved. So, with that, I see Mr. McClary is here in the audience. If you have any questions for him, but basically, it's just a straightforward extension of time. As you know, this is kind of a community venture, so it just has a little bit more to it in getting funding, et cetera, et cetera. So, we're just asking for the extension, and I think that that pretty much sums it up.
Okay. Well, Mr. McClary, would you like to come forward?
Well, thank you, Chair Foster. Not too much to add from what Ms. Wald had to state. We are actively working with members of the community to try to pull together the fundraising for this project, so I can come before you and tell you with a straight face that something, that things are happening, wheels are in motion. We're not simply asking for an extension while this sits idly with no idea or any expectation that it's going to be moving forward. We do think that we'll be able to, within the next year, certainly be able to get to the point where we can get this project going forward, or at least complete the fundraising portion and make the decision on whether it's not, it's going to go forward or not. So, we think with the one-year extension, we should be okay.
Great. Questions for? Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Want to have a motion at this point in time?
I'll move that we grant a 12-month time extension for Design Review Permit DRP 14-17 for the installation of new lighting for the skate park located at 450 East Ojai Avenue.
Excellent. I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Merk?
Yes.
Isabella?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, our second item is actually a discussion item, and it's Second Residential Unit Ordinance. I'd like to hear from staff to the conversation.
I'm sorry. So, there's been a little time gap in here since we had our discussion regarding Second Residential, the Second Residential Unit Ordinance, not the Compliance Unit Ordinance, but the actual ordinance. At the last meeting, which was, I believe, November 4th, the commission asked that I put together just a matrix that kind of talks about our rules and how that fits into what the state law allows you to do. I was asked to, the reason that, I mean, I hope that the commissioners are keeping track of all the information we've given you so far, and if you're needing us to separate this out and put it in a separate binder for you, we're more than willing to do that. But you see before you all the code. In the italic, this is all the actual state law, and I know that some feel that's a little wordy and a little hard to deal with, and so the matrix is just another form of the same rules and regulations. And I think that was what was requested, and you should just begin your discussions regarding the second unit, and if you need some reminders of the framework that you were talking about or what the items were, we staff could help you with that.
Great. Well, I, for one, found the matrix helpful. I mean, it simplifies what can be complex rather quickly, so thank you for doing that. You know, maybe as far as approaching this, we could start at the top of the matrix and, you know, start going down the line. But before we do that, is there, are there any commissioners have anything particular they want to discuss, or points they would like to make prior to addressing these individually?
Are we going to have public comment first?
Well, it's a discussion, so, yeah.
So, how does that work in the discussion?
It's wherever we decide we want it at the time to discuss.
The public can join at any time in the discussion?
Right. Well, you know, we're somewhat loose about it, I think, as a discussion item. I think we would like to maybe go through some of the items, and, I mean, obviously, we have people here that want to speak. I have several cards in front of me, so, you know, it's just a matter of timing, more than anything. Maybe, given the fact that there's so many of you out there, maybe we should address them first. That's a.
I can start the process a little bit, because I think I know why most of the people are here.
Okay.
In our second dwelling ordinance, we've got, in the matrix, it goes, it lists through certain items of consideration. Generally, summing it up from our last conversation, there was the AB Bill 1866, I believe, that's what it was, that was passed a while ago. And in 2003, there was a deadline for cities to establish their own ordinances if they were going to be more than the city minimum, the state minimum mandates. So, back in 2003, which we still have a member, John, who was there, they put together what we have now as our second dwelling ordinance. So, that's a little bit of history. And back then, there might have been different circumstances that drove the decisions made in that ordinance. And I think where we find ourselves, where I believe we find ourselves today is in a little different space than we were in 2003. One of the places is that what's now happening as a, I think, as a societal, people are moving, they're going into the new urbanization type concept. They're moving within more urban, more compact environments where walkability, sustainability, and all those issues are now up front. That's one item. The next item is that we have an affordable housing shortage here in Ojai. Like that woman spoke earlier, there's a certain creative aspect, a certain creative group here in Ojai that is literally being priced out of the market. They can't afford to live here. We have, we have a serious shortage of housing. Now, we understand that the affordable housing issue and second dwellings has a lot to do with vacation rentals as well. I think what we're talking about today, right now, on the books, our current ordinance, it's illegal to have vacation rentals in the City of Ojai. So, as we move forward in this discussion, I think we got to keep on track with that, that they are, at this point, illegal and against the ordinance. Now, it's up to the city council to do whatever they're going to do with that, but I think some of the solutions to this affordable housing, and I believe why this, most of these people are here, is this is the tiny home community. The tiny home community, I believe, is a, from looking into it myself, is a viable option for low-income or affordable-by-design housing. It has a lot of benefits, and I think that they're going to talk to that today. I've been reviewing ordinances from the City of Fresno, which allows them now there, Portland, Oregon, another location, and a few other places. So, with that said, I believe that when we get to that last item where it says "mobile homes" on our matrix, I believe that there is a possible consideration to take very seriously to redefine tiny homes as a unique type of housing that falls out of the parameter of trailers and RVs and has a category of its own. And I think with that said, I think you might want to then let the public talk.
Yeah, sure.
Because I think that's really why they're here.
Thank you for the introduction, yeah. Cindy Voss. Cindy?
Cindy Voss. I live at, well, I will be living at 115 North Alvarado, and I just moved here. I haven't been here very long. I'm horrified to think that I moved from Montecito, and this place is going to turn into Montecito. That would be my greatest concern at the moment. No, I'm really glad to be out of Santa Barbara, and I'm really glad to be here, and I have also purchased a property that I would like to someday be able to house some tiny homes on and to offer affordable housing to people in this community. I like this place, and I think it has a lot of character, and people have a lot of character, and we, I would hate to lose that. So, I'm, and then I'm going to listen. Thanks.
Thank you. Karen Snyder?
Well, I, Karen Snyder and I am a homeowner on the east end of Ojai at 339 Avonita Del Recreio. And allowing tiny houses would be a great thing here, and I just, I can see myself as someone who would make use of an ordinance, allowing a tiny house to be placed in my backyard. As everyone's already said, tiny homes are just cute. They're much nicer than RVs, mobile homes, or trailers, and could be used, and I would consider, I would like to have one on my property, and I would consider making it available for a short or long-term rental, and would also, you know, for friends and family to stay. And I guess we've already discussed the shortage of rental spaces. So, I think that this would be a much cheaper, more affordable alternative than apartment units. Anyway, I just want to say that I fully support an ordinance for tiny homes, and thank you for considering it.
Yeah, thanks. Mark Rose?
Mailing address is 1857 Miners Road, but we live in Ojala, up 33. We live in Washington State on the Olympic Peninsula, and we first came to Ojai four years ago and fell in love with the place. So, we come back once a year for about five or six months. We spend all our money locally. We go to the farmer's market. We go to the hardware store. We put a lot of money back into this community. We love this community, and we'd love to live here as a second home. And the tiny house movement is just ideal for us. It's really encouraging to hear people who want to have tiny homes on their property because it's exactly the sort of situation we're looking for. We love hiking, the environment, and what tiny homes are. They're not mobile homes. They're really a home, and it's sort of the anti-hording movement. You know, if you can stick yourself into 120 square feet, you're getting rid of a lot of stuff, and you're really living sort of in harmony, and you can only do it here. I mean, Washington State where we are, it rains a lot. You know, it's nice to have this open space. So, I hope there's a way you can find to code this so people like us who want to be here for a second home can find others who are willing to give their property to tiny homes, and we're glad to find this community. And thank you.
Great. Thanks. Vina Lustado?
My name is Vina Lustado. I live off of McAndrew, and I have a business in downtown Ojai called Soul House Design. Without a doubt, there is a dire need for affordable housing in Ojai. Many people want to live here, but most of us cannot afford it. Development guidelines are restrictive, and rightfully so. We want to preserve the natural beauty of Ojai and minimize development of multi-story structures. The dilemma of affordable housing is not unique to Ojai. Many cities are confronted with soaring housing costs, but it's time to look at alternative housing solutions. Many people throughout the country are realizing the benefits of living in smaller dwellings. A movement that is growing rapidly is the formation of tiny house communities. Tiny houses are sprouting up everywhere, and they are proving to be viable solutions for economical housing developments. North Carolina, a new tiny house community called Village of Wildflowers, is legally zoned and founded on the belief that smaller is smarter. Closer to our backyard is the City of Fresno, who just passed a municipal code for tiny homes and backyard cottages. This new ordinance, which goes into effect January 3rd, 2016, can be a template for used by other cities for permitting tiny homes on wheels as second dwelling units. The code section sets forth regulations and definitions to include tiny homes as an acceptable backyard cottage. In addition to tiny homes being used as second dwelling units, a tiny house village can address issues not only regarding affordable housing but also environmental impact. Tiny houses are often designed to be off-the-grid with solar panels and equipped with gray water systems that can mitigate the water crisis in Ojai. The design quality of tiny houses can be at a high level with an artistic flavor that is compatible to our city. I believe that tiny home villages can also be a financial benefit to our city. It can serve as a model for sustainable communities, and Ojai is the perfect place for that. Many tourists come to Ojai looking for eco-villages, and we can be the first sustainable tiny house community in California. I can assure you that many people will be lining up the door. And because the square footage of tiny homes are inherently small, usually about 200 or 300 square feet, they are viable affordable-by-design option for second dwelling units. We all know that square footage is directly related to cost, so the strategy of minimizing square footage can greatly reduce our housing costs, thereby providing the affordability that is so desperately needed here. As a tiny house dweller, I can attest to countless benefits of living in a tiny house, and many residents here in Ojai have expressed interest in forming these communities. However, our zoning ordinance needs to be reassessed to allow for alternative housing solutions. Thank you.
Vina? I have one question. Is Fresno the only city that's passed an actual ordinance, or are there others in the state that have passed ordinances regarding tiny houses?
Correct. North Carolina, Flat Rock, North Carolina have passed an ordinance, and they're starting that community called Village of the Wildflowers, and it's legally zoned, and I think they have 200 units planned. And I have all the requirements within the City of Fresno that defines what a tiny home on wheels is and how they were able to come up with a design criteria for that, and I have, all of the information is needed.
Okay. Thanks. Daniel Bell?
My name is Daniel Bell, and I'm a California licensed contractor as well as a local public educator. I work at the high school level. I live in Thousand Oaks at the moment, but I work in Ventura County, all over the place. I teach workshops throughout the county, and as a public educator, I've spent the last three years traveling around the country teaching workshops on sustainable design, just as I teach in the high school level. And the reason I bring this to your attention is because it has a really large following that is constantly growing, and I wanted to reassure you guys that the demand is definitely there for this, and it's not just kind of a fad, if you will, at the moment. As a public educator, I am also in a position where I cannot currently afford to live in the community in which I serve, and that's kind of a problem. I really hope that you guys will eventually find a way to. I really hope that you guys will eventually find a way to take all of these comments and considerations and the possible loopholes that have been put in place and overcome those and legalize this process so that people such as myself, public educators, or individuals such as the artists that you hear from earlier tonight can find a way to stay within the communities that we want to live in and be a member or a part of this local community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Morris?
Hi, my name's Rachel Morris and I live at 345 West Center Street, Ventura, California. And I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for bringing up this topic, I'm so excited about it. I came to a workshop a few weeks ago that was really well-attended about tiny homes and actual intentional community. And I live in a little, one of those little old-fashioned houses off the avenue, it's 670 square feet. And like current houses are around like 1,500, 2,000 square feet and people think I live in a tiny house myself. But they come visit me and they're like, "Oh, we love this, it's pretty, it's so cute", da-da-da. And I'm like, "It's 670 square feet." And they're amazed. And I find myself knocking around in it like a marble in a big shoebox, it's way too big for me. I've got a music room, I've got, you know, spaces that I just don't need, and I've got a mortgage that's like choking. I'm sitting here going, you know, why am I stressing, why am I putting this much time into something? I want a tiny home. I want an attractive little place that's kind to the environment and that I can afford so I can have the freedom to do the wonderful, you know, types of things I like to do like volunteer for this, that, and the other thing. The other thing I'd like to point out is that I'm actually a retired activist. I'm not being an activist now, I'm a citizen. But I ran a nonprofit in Ventura for nine years and it was about climate change. And so I learned a lot about city planning, for example, we have to build X amount of homes and there's always this big debate, do you want to go up or do you want to go out? Because if you go up, you lose the view and if you go out, you wipe out the hillsides. But there's one other option you can do and it's called going in. And what that means is, I need to provide X number of homes, but I don't need to have these billowing big things, especially when what people really want is they want to be able to have freedom to afford a home and these tiny homes are just totally fitting in. I just want to close with, one thing that's really freaking me out is that our coast just got wiped out, our pier just got knocked out, we're in the middle of a drought and I can't go skiing most of the time. We're really, really seeing the effects of climate change and tiny homes are a beautiful way to respond. Thanks.
Anita Hendricks?
I've been a fan of tiny homes for years. I just think they're a wonderful solution. You can do so much with them and I think they can be done. They are, they're just like beautiful little homes and what I'd love to see is a complex of tiny homes to address our affordable housing shortage. We have locations like the bowling alley, there's a large lot next to the athletic club. And I'd love to see a cluster of tiny homes with a central building that might be, you know, recreation, combination, professional kitchen where the people in the tiny homes can come together and also the property could be shared so that they can garden and do other group activities as a community. So I think they're a great solution and I would like to actually see incentives, this is somewhat related, this somehow we create incentives for solutions to our affordable housing, whether it be reductions in the fees that people pay for licensing, you know more about incentives than I do, but there might be something that would give people incentives to make dedicated low-income housing. And I'd also like to see a commitment to the residents of Ojai so that these houses actually are in some way relegated for people who live here and we're desperately in need of that. So I, I just, they warm my heart, I am just so excited about them, I think it's a delightful solution and I hope that you do everything you can to support them. Thank you.
Thanks. Julie Bray?
Hi, I'm Julie Bray, I live at 1130 McAndrew, Ojai. So I'm going to be living there until January and then I need to leave there and everybody's asking me, "Are you going to stay in Ojai?" But my answer is that I can't afford it. And related to the second residential unit, I learned how to build tiny houses two years ago and I designed my own and it's been ready for two years, but I couldn't envisage where would I put this tiny house once I built it. And the ideal way for me to go forward with that would be to build it in a community that I like, with, you know, and in somebody's backyard, because there you're part of a family and part of a community. And the community of Ojai, since I arrived here in February this year, has been really welcoming. And it would be a shame to leave it just because I feel like it's too expensive to live here. Added to that, I know people who, not only in the creative community, but also people who work here, are just breaking even every month and they say that that's because of the rent that they pay. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward, hasn't submitted a card? No? All right. Well, it's a fascinating subject, thank you for your input. It's really a lot to take in, but I think it's well worthwhile and I'm sure we have lots of questions from our commissioners to get this discussion ramped up a little bit. Anybody want to come to the forefront?
Well, it almost seems like we've got two different subjects going here. I don't know that the second unit ordinance is really going to solve the housing problem and it's not going to really address this whole tiny homes thing either. So I don't know that we can make much progress on that tonight, I mean, we can just say, here's the ordinance, here's how we want to update it, but I think to do this whole tiny houses thing, that's a whole different subject, but I would like to know more about it. I think it'd be great to have a presentation with somebody about how it works and I'd like to look at that Fresno ordinance and say, maybe we could use that here.
Maybe there's a fit.
Yeah.
Well, in looking, in looking at the ordinance here, John, I do think that it's relevant to our discussion in a couple of different ways. The fact that we're going to be addressing second dwellings in itself, the ordinance in itself may or may not allow for a tiny home. I mean, it's a provision that is, that we can include in our new ordinance if we draft a new ordinance. And so I think it's very apropos to this particular ordinance, where else would it be? In fact, in Fresno, it's in their second dwelling ordinance. It's, well, it actually became a separate ordinance, so in that part I do agree that we probably need like an ad hoc committee to really go over this tiny home issue because there's so many factors to it. But I do believe it specifically is, applies to this ordinance, especially when we get down to item of mobile homes and other portable, you know, homes being allowed on people's property has a second dwelling. So, that's my view of that.
Okay.
Just a question regarding tiny homes or houses. I've actually, you know, done some research, I also attended the workshop that was here several weeks ago, really enjoyed it. And the question I have is, is a tiny home always on a trailer, is it always a mobile unit? Because I've read articles where they've got tiny houses on the ground, you know, hooked up to sewer and what have you, but they're calling them a tiny house. And I think in a way, if we defined in this discussion which way we're going, or do we give that a different name, is that essentially a second unit, but it just happens to be small by design?
Yes.
So in a way, we may be handling some of that in this ordinance.
Exactly.
And there are two sides possibly to the tiny house, meaning on wheels or on a foundation.
I think that's a key point of distinction to be made as we're talking about the second unit.
Right. And then the other interesting thing too is, in the state, if I read this correctly, I believe the minimum size for a dwelling unit or a second unit is 150 square feet. So essentially, you know, by design, that's a tiny house. If, you know, we decided to include that.
What code is that in?
I think it was, I think it's here in the state one and I know when I read over the, I believe it was one for Danville that we looked at last month, they had the minimum of 150 square feet. I'll look for it, I think I marked it in somewhere.
Because I've heard varying figures depending where you source it.
Yeah, Kathleen, can you address that? Is that the state minimum size for a small, or, was it 150?
I don't know exactly what it is, but it's pretty small and it's like...
Mm-hmm. Oh, here, I think it is, Danville was 150, I looked at, I'll look for it, I think it was in here, oh, here it is, right here, page 5 of 9.
Yeah.
Government code here, health and safety code, a minimum 150 square feet unit. It looks like that's what it is.
Mm-hmm.
But they're calling this an efficiency unit and I didn't have enough time to look that up. Kathleen, are you, do you have a definition on an efficiency unit? That would be on...
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah. It would seem like maybe it means sustainable, but I'm not sure.
Well, that's what it's saying, it says an efficiency unit is a minimum 150 square feet.
And they probably just mean efficient by size, I'm taking it.
Yeah, it's just a...
Okay, just a term.
I mean, I could look it up, but it's probably defined as a specific, you know, usually it has to have a kitchen facility and a bathroom.
Exactly, it's a living quarter, so it would have both of those.
So efficiency unit might just have like a kitchenette or something like that instead of a full-blown kitchen, but I could probably look it up.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know how that's interpreted, you know, the minimum size habitable, I know that that code has been changed over the years, probably because of a tendency to decrease size of, you know, structures. At one time it was larger and my understanding it's smaller, so what that exactly is, it would be good to know.
Other comments?
Other comments, yeah.
Well, I think that we, I think there's a benefit in going through the matrix, one item at a time, I think it's all related in the end.
Right.
So we should start from ownership and work our way down.
I think we're at that point, if there's no more questions about specific to tiny houses, do that.
Yeah, that efficiency unit says that it's occupancy of by no more than two people with a minimum floor area of 150 square feet, which may also have a partial kitchen or bathroom facilities as specified by ordinance. It's the health and safety code and it just says same meaning, you know. I mean, you know, this has been around for a really long time because, you know, where I'm from, they used to have SROs, you know, single-room occupancy, where the bathroom was down the hall and people lived in, you know, basically really small. So I think that probably some of these definitions go way back, you know, to when you're, you know, what's a unit and what's an efficiency unit and...
Is the health and safety code adopted by California residential?
It's in, yeah, it's just one of the...
Is it a standard that's adopted by?
It's a standard, right, it's California rule and regulations, it's one of the, isn't there 29 of them?
All right.
Yeah, so it's just saying, and then a manufactured home would have, is defined in here too, so it's just providing those definitions. It's typical code that it just refers to another code and then another code, you know?
Right.
That's why I didn't see the definition.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's move forward then, let's start with this, tackle this ownership. Currently, and I'll just read this, okay, to bring us up to speed, "The applicant shall agree," and this is the current city code pertaining to second units, "the applicant shall agree in writing to annually submitting to the city clerk a sworn statement or declaration under penalty of perjury that the property is owner-occupied. The applicant shall agree in writing to discontinue the use of the second unit as a separate dwelling if and when the property is not owner-occupied. The second unit shall not be offered for sale apart from the primary unit and the maximum term of any lease shall not exceed three years." So I guess the key word there is the property occupied.
Owner occupied. Yeah.
It's not the particular second unit structure, but the property has to have the owner upon. So, comments?
Well, first of all, I don't see any reason why, barring the vacation rental, let's put that aside, I'm saying, because they're illegal, we're not, it's not a vacation rental, it's a home. If the owner has the home, and there's, why should we limit them in renting that home out long-term? That's what it's saying, they can't do, even if they're not occupying the main residence. Sounds ridiculous to me. Take it out.
The three-year lease you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah, so why would, if an owner has to move and they want to keep their home, why can't they rent out the second dwelling? Why do they have to stop renting it out? I'm not talking about short-term rental, I'm talking about long-term rental, which is what we need is affordable housing.
I don't know why, but that's wrong.
It is?
I don't know what the, I don't know what the reasoning is behind that.
Yeah, how did it get there, John?
I don't know.
It's your fault, John.
It just makes, you know, when we were talking about this the first time, it was, people were very concerned that this would lead to kind of speculation in property, that if you didn't have to have the owner living on the property and then have this guest house, that people would just buy properties and build second houses on them and rent the whole thing out to other people. So it was kind of an attempt to maintain the integrity of a neighborhood because you had people that are actually living there.
What about the three-year lease or max on that term?
Yeah.
I mean, I get the, I think I agree with the owner-occupied, personally I think that's, you know, there's a sense of pride and ownership, it's a less tendency for investors...
Are you agreeing with the fact that you can't rent your house if your owner occupied and you have a guest, and you have a second dwelling? This is what this says.
Right.
And then if you leave for whatever reason and you rent out your house, that you can no longer rent out your guest house?
I haven't even thought about that.
That's what this says, that's what we're, that's what this says.
So there must be, that's obviously something that, catch in this, because I think the intent of it is not, I think that's an unintended consequence of this, the way this is worded here. I think the intent is to have an owner-occupied property where it shows pride of ownership and the person willingness to make sure that things get done correctly or appropriately to the neighborhood and that sort of thing, versus having someone from the outside come in, buy a property with the intent of investment. So there's a distinction to be made there, so, but you make a good point.
Yeah, but is the intent of investment, if it's for long-term rentals, what's wrong with that? Versus, okay, putting vacation rentals out because we do need rentals, we have a shortage of them. So there should be no problem with someone wanting to do that.
Right. And it, so it almost sounds like there's three different items going on in this one ownership clause. But the one thing I wanted to bring up was, we've had past discussions on this and we had a lot of public input in regards to the property being owner-occupied. I mean, a lot of people turned up and said they felt like that was really important for the same reasons that Steve brought up, you know, pride of ownership or just that it'd be in a neighborhood setting that there would be somebody there taking care of the property, watching the property. So I remember at the time, we all were kind of in agreement with that, but then the second thing is, you know, as far as the maximum term of any lease, I don't, I don't see that that has any relevance.
Well, the reason it's relevant is because if you move out of your house and you have a long-term lease, you can't force a tenant out, but based on the fact that you no longer live there.
Well, I guess you're right.
That's, I mean...
That's why I would have the three-year.
If you read this all aggregated together, it's very, very clear.
Okay.
You sign up a statement saying that you'll live there and that you'll agree in writing to discontinue the use of the second unit as a separate dwelling unit, but if you have a ten-year lease with a tenant, how would you be able to do that?
That's true.
So they're saying you can't...
So you can always renew it.
You're not engaging somebody in a long-term lease and then, and then moving out and then saying, "Oh, well, sorry." I think that's why it's all together like that.
Okay, thanks for that, I was a little confused on that, so it makes more sense.
So I think if you don't like any of it, you know, you probably don't, I mean, if you don't care whether somebody is there as an owner renting a second unit out, and if you want the two of them to function like a duplex and both of them to be rentals, then I think all of it's just a moot point. But if you want it to be owner-occupied, that's why that third thing's in there.
I just see it's another impediment. I just see it's another impediment, I mean, we got a shortage of affordable housing, we're gonna just make, you know, we're gonna make another rule that, that limits affordable housing, and the whole goal on the housing element and the housing plan is to increase, not to decrease. So I still don't see, uh, nobody, who's suggesting that just because you have to move out of your house, that, you know, automatically your guest house or your second dwelling is gonna turn into some kind of ghetto pad? I mean, it's just, it's just, I think, a, a provision that's unnecessary, and it limits a person to what they want to do in long-term rentals, within what, what we need here. It's, you know, we don't, we don't need to limit the stock, we need to increase the stock. So we're gonna say that you have to move out for a year, cause you, you're gonna go somewhere else, and you can't rent out your guest house now? So you're gonna tell one of these artist people that they can't live there anymore? Because you can't rent it out, but you can rent your main house out, but you won't be able to rent out the guest house? It sounds ridiculous to me. Sorry.
That's what we're here to do?
Yeah, I was just sharing the fact that in our past discussions, I mean, we had some lengthy discussions about this, and we had a lot of members from the public come in and discuss it, and then I know the topic came up of, well, gee, what if, you know, for example, there was some elderly woman they kept referring to, and she had to go into a nursing home, and in which case you could go into the city and have, um, I don't know, there was some sort of provision that it was still.
A hardship.
Yeah, we made a, in the compliance program, you made a provision that, like a, um, backdoor out of this, that, that, on a case-by-case basis, if they wanted to apply for something because there was a hardship. I mean, obviously, I hear this all the time, and our department chair can probably say this too, that what we hear is that people have these second units, so that when they're older, they can move into the second unit and rent the house out. So often, it's not very often we get somebody wanting to move entirely off the property, I mean, these people have been coming in and saying, that's the whole intent, is they want these things, so they can have income now as a second unit while they're in the main house, and then when they can't function in the main house, that they switch over, they're not intending to leave.
But they're still owner-occupied, that's not, that's not in conflict with this.
No, 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 it's not, that's what I'm pointing out. It's not very, the exception that, that is brought up over and over and over again is an exception, not the rule. What we hear all the time is people saying, I mean, I'm, I intend when I no longer, I'm eighty or ninety, to be in the smaller house.
That, that, you're saying that's the rule?
That's what we hear all the time, I mean, that's what the common theme that we hear, hear all the time in our department.
So why do you think, any clues as to what, what, um, why, I mean, cause I've also remembered these.
I see this in a lot of ordinances throughout the state, that communities just feel like when you're adding a second unit on to a resi, to our one piece of property and not multifamily, that this is what keeps it from functioning like multiple family. People are concerned about that, you know, they didn't buy in a multifamily, this is what you normally hear if people come out and talk about it, they didn't buy in a multifamily zone, they didn't think that there could be a duplex, they check into those things before they buy. And so this just provides that assurance to people, if it's not a big issue here in Ojai, then, you know, maybe it's not an issue, but that's, this is something you see all the time, owner-occupied. But it's either one of the units. You know, you can, like I said, you can be in either one of them, if you're still on the property, you're still owns, you're still owning the property, you're still invested in how it's maintained.
So, summarize Kathleen, uh, the rule is generally people tend to stay with the property if they own it.
That's what we hear all the time.
And the exception would be for some hardship case or otherwise, they move away, and then there makes available to.
I think that the exception that we heard over and over again is somebody who is now in a, at the last part of their life in a, in a caregiving facility, and they've had to be removed because of no, um, you know, just physical, not by choice, in other words, and so it's just that last part of their life, I think that was the exception, and I think that's why you made that exception to the compliance unit.
Uh huh.
And so, you know, I think it's just really rare that that happens with a property owner, versus buying property for investment. Because we've been doing, how many units have we been doing now for the compliance program, we've had like eleven or twelve, how many? Yeah, and most of those people have thought this through when they're doing this investment, you know, of putting, I mean, it's a really expensive investment for them, and how it's going, how they see that playing out to, you know, in the, um, whether they occupy the big home or the little home.
Uh huh.
So I, I just, we just don't hear that being, um, a situation very often, is somebody wanting, that's desperate, that says, you know, I wanna rent both them out because I was forced out of my home.
Well, so then, if, if that's the rare case, then is there any benefit to changing it?
That's, that's a good point.
I mean, you know, then, when, when the community has been so clear that this is what they want, you know, I don't know.
I think you could consider doing some kind of, like you did with the compliance program, saying, you know, that, that if, if, if there's a hardship, a hardship, and then give some findings to the hardship, you know, you know, that person can demonstrate, you know, that they were, like, let's just say, for instance, you were relocated by your job and you wanna come back, and you've kept the property, you don't wanna sell the property because then you're out of the market, hard to get back in. I mean, you could come up with, I'm sure we could talk to him.
Sounds very legitimate.
It's very legitimate.
I mean, some people take sabbaticals, some people, you know, get moved, so I would think we could talk to Matt about making this hardship, I think Ojai is all about having a ruled majority, that fits the majority, but having some way to look for the exception. So I, I think we can talk to Matt about that.
I think that's a great, that's a great compromise.
We did with the compliance, and so he didn't have a problem with that, and again, I think somebody comes and says, you know, my mother was just moved into, you know, an Alzheimer's facility, and she can't stay in her home, and the home isn't for sale, I mean, would devastate my mom, she thinks she's coming home, we don't wanna sell it, I mean, we'd all, would very much be compassionate to that. I think.
Yeah, no, that's a great reasoning.
I think that's a perfect balance.
So, we're talking about a hardship clause added to this, huh?
Determined by planning commission? Or city council?
Oh no, I think, what?
The compliance program required the city council to approve the hardship.
Well, yeah, but we're not, you know, this is gonna be part of the ordinance, so we're going to adopt it the way we want it, which would be, I think, planning commission, I don't think people have the way to go to city council for that.
Draft it and then for a final approval.
And if, and if it, when it goes up to city council, they wanna change it to city council, they can certainly do that, but I think we see that city council has a lot on their plate, they're not making it through their meetings, you know, we, this is something I think that you folks can do.
I think it's a great solution, great solution.
Then let's move on to the next, uh, item, which is zoning. And as, as it reads now, is the lot shall be located in agriculture, open space, residential, or village mixed-use zone. Provided however, only second units which are attached to the primary unit may be constructed in the R1 zone, and the second units shall be provided entirely in the RS zone.
Prohibited?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, prohibited, um, so, define R1 zone, so everyone's clear.
Well, it's just a single-family, R1, single-family zone, and RS is the special residential zone. And I can't offer any insight into why you would only want them attached, other than, um, somebody having the idea that you don't want somebody to know you have a second unit, because if it's attached, and the door, it's like, it's like a duplex, if you design a duplex in, on a corner lot, one door faces this, one door faces that, everybody drives by, and they think it's, you know, single-family home, they don't pay attention. You know, so maybe that's the whole thought behind it, was that it still walked and talked and looked like a single-family home. I think that's a little restrictive.
I spent some time down in the city today going over this map, and talking to Kathleen about it, and, um, and I'm gonna blame John for this one too. What were you smoking? Our, the R1 zone, it makes no sense, I mean, why pick the R1 zone out of, I was looking at the map, out of all the different places, to isolate it, to have a, uh, to not to have an attached dwelling, I don't, I don't know the reasoning behind it, nor do anybody that knows the reasoning behind it, and I, nor can I figure out a good reason for it. And then the RS zone, that's the special zone, now, that's interesting, we have an RS zone, it's a very small area in Ojai, and that's specialty zone, or a special zone, R is, S is for special, and now, nobody really knows why that was created either, but the guess is, it was for like, um, maybe halfway houses, um, types of special needs, uh, people that needed, uh, type of housing. And again, why would you preclude, you know, a second dwelling in an RS zone? If it's a specialty zone and it really will take anything, why, why limit it to that? So, that's our, that was our discussion today.
Kathleen, you wanted to find the RS zone?
So the RS zone is a special housing zone, and the, you know, I, I mean, I only had a limited time to research this today, but my guess is that specialty housing zones, you know, they came, um, via the, oh, I don't know, two or three cycles of housing elements, so maybe fifteen years ago or so, or, it's kind of the same thing as second units, you know, at some point, the state had to step in and say, you have to have a zone that will take farm workers, you have to have a zone that will take homeless shelters, you have to have a zone that will take transitional housing, you know, people coming out of rehab, you know, that type of thing, because, you know, obviously, people, I mean, cities were prohibiting them, and so the state steps in and says, you can't do that. Your community has to have housing for all different types of people in all different types of housing. So, you know, so then they say, okay, find a zone that you can have a homeless shelter in. I don't know, I mean, the problem in Ojai is that there are homes in various different districts, and, and they walk, when you drive by them, they, they don't, you know, I mean, if, if there's somebody that has an RS zone and has a house in it, and it looks just like every other house, I guess it would make sense that they could have a second unit. Generally speaking, in a lot of the zones, I see that, um, uh, like in the ag zones, I see that they have other provisions that allow caretakers or farmworker housing that isn't as restricted as second units. So usually they have a wider range of, even, you know, I'm saying.
Based on acreage, right?
Yeah, based on, you know, secondary, a second unit has parameters, and, you know, caretakers or farmworker housing just really doesn't. So, what are you gonna say?
We only have about three or four parcels in the city that are zoned RS.
Yeah, I figured.
One of them is Whispering Oaks, you have a hundred and one units, why would you wanna allow a second unit on a hundred and one?
Well, you couldn't, because it's not ancillary to a single-family home.
Yeah.
Where, just out of curiosity, where are the other two?
Over off of Lisa somewhere.
That's pretty good memory, Sherry.
She's been around a while.
Here's, here's the map, if you can see it, RS, it's that pink, pinky zone, and.
It's got a stripe through it.
It's got a stripe through it, yeah, that's, this is hard to.
Again, again, it's gonna get back to that, you know, it's very select, somebody was checking a box, making, we have a lot of residential zones for a little tiny town.
So what do you guys think about that, that phrase, only second units which are attached to the primary unit may be constructed in the R1 zone?
Well, I think I've seen, I've seen detached second units on our, in R1 zones.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think it's, you just.
Wanna scratch it?
It's saying, it's saying, it's got only second units which are attract, attached to the primary unit may be constructed in the R1 zone.
Yeah.
But I've seen, I've seen them in the R1 zone, detached.
Maybe that's why they qualify for the compliance.
Right, but now, I think, I think we should strike.
We strike that, yeah, I strike that.
Well, wait, hang on, hang on, let's talk about this, because what, what happens, I mean, maybe part of the reason it was put in there was because, um, we don't wanna be paving over open space, you know, we don't wanna be putting more dwellings in, on open land.
What do you mean?
So we.
These are already existing houses in R1.
Right, but you're talking about putting another unit on the, on the land.
On their lot.
On their lot.
Just like everyone else can, in every other zone. If they meet the restrict, setback restriction.
The R1 zone is the biggest zone, I mean, that's a hundred and thirty-eight parcels, that's, that's, that's a big zone. I mean, that's, that's only the second, I mean, it's, it's only second to, you know, the. Right.
Yeah, but you're still covering the same area if you're attaching it, what, what do you, what do you mean? You're, if you, if you have the right to put six hundred and whatever square feet on, it's still six hundred and forty square feet, whether it's attached or detached.
I know, but my point is, is that it's covering, you know, in other words, instead of here's a structure that you're just making somewhat bigger, you're taking a structure and then you're, 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 you're putting a whole new footprint on the land, you're, you're paving over more green space.
With attached, you're actually like sharing walls.
Right. I mean, I'm not.
I mean, why, why, really, why restrict that, I mean, is that really that important?
Well, I don't know, let's talk about it.
Okay, I mean.
I mean, you know, we are a community that wants to preserve our.
But does attached units really preserve it? I, I personally think that detached units look just as good, or just as attractive as attached units, with breezeways and porches, I mean, it could be very well done, I don't see, it's still six hundred and forty square feet of land that you're gonna eat up regardless, yeah, you got a shared wall, but why?
Not if you go up.
Well, but, but nobody's saying, that's not the issue.
Or over your garage.
Obviously, attached, you can do attached anytime you want, right, in any, any zone. But why take this one zone and say you can't do it detached in this zone only?
Because it's a big zone, and it's a lot of land, it's a lot of land that would change the.
What would be the, um, general square footages of R1 zone, does it vary between the ten thousand, or we have smaller?
No, they're, they range from six thousand, seven thousand on up.
Okay.
You know, over an acre.
But I, I think, don't you think the lot coverage and setback and heights and all that take care of those issues?
I think it's a lot coverage issue, I mean, that's how I look at it, it's like six hundred and forty square feet is six hundred and forty square feet of the footprint of the lot coverage zone.
And that's assuming we keep the six forty.
Yeah, right, but whatever the, whatever.
Well, that's just it, you know, it's like, let's just keep in mind that that's where we're going.
Where?
To discuss all this other stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think, well, and we will revisit all this as, as we summarize, but get through that, but, um.
I'm just wondering if it's written incorrectly there, if the idea is that the only place you can attach a unit is the R1 zone, rather than.
Oh, that'd be, that would be interesting, yeah.
Kinda makes more sense today.
The only second units which are attached to the primary unit may be constructed, only second, which are attached, so it's.
Well, I think, I think if you really look at it, it's clear that it was, they were trying to make it more restrictive in the R1. Because, you know, having it attached to a unit makes it actually part of your home, most people want it a little bit, they want a little space, um, because they wanna separate at least the way people enter into the house, maybe from a side yard, maybe down. I mean, I just, I just think it's clear that the R1, for whatever reason, remember back in two thousand and three or four, when this first came out, that the idea was they wanted to take cities' right to regulate design, I mean, Chester keeps on saying, but I know you can make this really nice and pretty, but we don't really have that control, we do not, they took that away from us. It was sort of like, you, city, you need to provide minimum standards, that if a person walks in, they get a permit, and you cannot say, this is prettier, that's that, you just can't do those things. And so I think maybe this was an attempt to try to have a little control over what's looking in, in the R1, which is, like I said, you know, you're driving by, you're not seeing another, you know, unit, but, um, that's just, it, because people prefer them to be separated, it's very, I, Sherry, out of all the ones we've done, has there been, how many have been attached that we've done?
Zero.
Yeah, and when I've done, the cities I've worked in before, I mean, I've done a couple that have been that way, where it's a new built, it's a newly constructed home, with like a casitas or whatever in the, in the home, where you can, it's a fully developed single unit, and you can lock off a door to another door, and, and so you can have, be part of your integrated home, or you can secure it off kind of like, you know, um, adjoining hotel rooms, and I've seen them done that way, but usually from ground up.
They're gonna be detached.
Yeah, al- always added on there, detached usually.
But is, is John's reading correct, is, in other words, is that what that means, or are we, are we sort of arguing the wrong point?
I don't know, I read it, I read it that, however, only second units which are attached to the primary, maybe, I don't know. I, I just think it's, I just think it's worded really poorly, and I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that there's.
Interpretation is you can only use attached second dwellings, right? They have to be attached.
That's how I see it, but it could be the other way around.
Only second units which are attached, or only second units.
Other zone?
I, I do feel like I've, well, if somebody came in, what would you tell them?
I see it that, it says, lots shall be located in ag, open space, residential, or village mixed-use. Provided however, the exception is, only second units which are attached can be constructed in the R1, that's how I read it.
Yeah, I think it. They have to be attached.
No, I think, no.
That's the rule place that you can.
That you can do it.
It's.
Because there are other, there are second units out there in the, that are detached in the R1 zone, and they're not all illegal.
If that's, if that's the case, I think we just need to rewrite that, to be a little bit more clear, you know, cause that make, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that, yeah, thanks, John.
The word only needs to be moved from the beginning of that clause down through.
May be constructed only in the R1 zone.
Well, I, I think it doesn't even belong in there, because it's saying zoning, tell me where you can do them at, and then tell me what you can do. I mean, they're combining something that doesn't belong together, you're not saying what you can do, you're saying what zoning, what zoning can you do a second unit in, and it should just say.
Yeah, yeah, it should be.
I mean, I don't even know why it says.
Yeah, well, it's under zoning, why, why does it have that complication in it in the first place?
It's in the wrong spot, remember, the state law says that you have to. Remember, the state law says that you have to make it by right in some, in resident, in some residential zone district. So a person has a right to go look at some residential district and say, where can I do this by right? Which means city hands off on telling them it has to be prettier or this construction or that construction. You cannot sit there and do that, it's by right.
Right.
So.
And I look at, you know, when we, you were referring to maybe why this was worded this way initially was to provide some sort of control over what things, you know, are the layouts of the.
I'm assuming.
You know, and I, I, I think that our setbacks and our, our, those limits actually take, that's why they're in place.
Well, again, you know, a lot of cities.
They're within the setbacks, they're in the height limits and all that sort of thing.
Yeah, yeah, and that's gonna, that's gonna come up on the next one too, lot size.
Well, I think, I think the, most cities do is they allow to, they allow a certain size by right. And then they provide for a CUP for something that's bigger. So, you know, X mile square feet, whatever it is, you know, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, whatever the community decides, you can put it on your, your property, provide, provide the proper parking by right. When you start to get bigger where there's more impacts, that's when you, when you add on the CUP. So if somebody comes in and says, okay, you want, I want to, the state says you have to be able to do it by right, no impediments. Sure, you can build five hundred by right. You come in and you want to do eight hundred or nine hundred and it gets bigger, then I want to have a say on where you're putting it and how it looks, I want it to look like the other house, you know, blah, blah, blah. So, you know, you can layer it lots of different ways. You know, that's, but this is kind of too confusing. And not, it doesn't really achieve a goal really.
So, yeah, so I think we're all in agreement.
Yeah, we gotta rewrite, rewrite this clause, yeah, rewrite this clause, yeah.
All right, so the next item is.
Well, I was just gonna say, so, so one of the recent things that we've had here, and one of the citizens has a house, it's zoned PL, and he has a house, a second unit in it, on it.
A PL?
PL, yes.
Was he public?
Yeah, he, it, it's just the randomness of Ojai that, and so, you know, he wanted to do the compliance unit. He couldn't do the compliance unit because he's not in the right zone. And unfortunately, you know, he has the choice of either rezoning his property to, you know, which is, you know, something that's residential, which would be very expensive to do a rezone, general plan amendment. I don't know why we're keeping it out of the RS or any of those things. I mean, even though there's only three properties, you know, you're, you're not accomplishing anything. And then even, you know, him, he make come before you because I told him, you know, that you guys are working on this. I've also explained to him about the compliance issue and he's reached out to, to staff. So, you know, there are people out there, I, I don't know what else, but PL is very restrictive.
So, let's talk about this specifically, just to get a frame of reference. He's has a PL, he has a house on a PL zone.
And a second unit.
And a second unit that currently exists.
That you can't make legal.
There's no institution or church or school or.
There was an institution there back before nineteen eighty. He's in this neighborhood, right here. And so all I'm saying is that, you know, there may be other zones you might want to consider putting in here. I don't think the commercial zones, you know, but, but maybe we need to talk about and ask Matt, if there's a legal, if there's a, if it's, if you're zoning something, but you actually are using the house, using the property as a house, you know, can you, is there a way to make it legal? Yeah, I don't know, because, you know, there are, there are those situations.
It's existing.
Yeah, well, there's, there's situations where people have houses in zones that don't provide for housing, they're legal nonconforming. And then they can't do this, you know. So just be aware that they're, because of the quirkiness of the zoning here and, you know, like even the RS.
Well, like on Ojai Avenue, there's still residences on Ojai Avenue next to Rancho, Sun Hotel down by.
And they're commercially zoned?
In the commercial zone and their houses. And if they wanted to build a second unit.
So I'm just saying, think about that, maybe there's a place for it where, and I could ask Matt about that. But, but, you know, again, it's the least impactful if you're already in a commercial, like Sherry's saying, if you're already in a commercial zone, even though traditionally a city would want somebody who's in a commercial zone with a house, force them to get out of that house and make it commercial, you know. Maybe there's a way that, 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 I don't know, I mean, just saying that, just be aware that it's out there.
Can we simply just introduce a CUP for all the areas that don't fall into the category of the ones that we want to restrict? If there's any.
You can't, you can't CUP against the zoning use, you would have to make it, we'd have to talk to Matt. Matt's willing to come the next time when you guys flush out, we'll put a little bit more, much on the bones here. But I just wanted to just tell you that there are a few people out there that don't fit conveniently into the box. So, you know, to have everything residential and, and I think it's residential, open space. It's funny, ag, and ag has a lot of uses to it. Like I said, they, they have more things available to them, even though you would think they would want to preserve it being ag.
Yeah.
Which is odd. So they can do a lot there in ag and open space, I don't know. So I just, I just, just be aware they're out there, they're coming in. We're getting close to the end of the day, you know, next Monday is the end of the compliance program. So we're getting a lot of activity and a lot of people saying, I, I wish I could meet the parameters, but I don't.
Right.
Just a quick comment about adding possibly some other zones to this, which I think is a really good idea and I'd like to explore that. But I know in the past we've had discussions about, about at some point, you know, if we do change some of our zoning that, you know, rather than the, let's say, for example, the commercial's always commercial, what if the market, like for now, there's, let's say there's a need for housing, could somebody actually convert a, a commercial space into housing?
They're doing it all the time.
They're doing it anyway, but we discussed, you know, to be a little, have more flexibility in our zoning to actually work with the market. And that doesn't mean like, you know, in five, 10 years, somebody, they move out, somebody could convert it back into commercial, but there's that flexibility.
Well, that's why I was, that's why I was leaning more toward not adding zones, but adding a provision somehow. Talked to Matt where each, each, each thing can be considered on its own merit instead of trying to, you know, figure it all out now because let's see what comes, comes to us. For instance, there's this gentleman here who's in a commercial zone who has a legitimate case for a rezoning or whatever, and he at least should be able to get a CUP or do whatever, he, he, do something on that particular piece of property. So I just, and I would encourage Matt to come up with some language to allow for all of these conditions to be reviewed and not limit, not limit it.
Exactly, and I agree with you on that.
It might not even be in the second unit, I mean.
It might be somewhere else.
For instance, commercial, I mean, commercial property in lots of cities, they allow for a residential-commercial blend if they have a lot of parcels that are deep. And so the front part of it has to be kept commercial along the corridor. But you might, you might see a lot of parcels, like, kind of like the bowling alley one, where it's only viable for the frontage to be commercial, commercial. Obviously, Ojai isn't going to sustain some kind of strip shopping mall, you know, it's not gonna work here. And so then you have this back half, what do you do with it? And if you're not zoned mixed use, and then mixed use gets kind of, you know, but that has its own, you know, complicated processes. But sometimes they're just as simple as commercial allow residential in the back as long as it's, you know, so many, you know, so many feet off the frontage corridor, you know, so, because you don't certainly want your commercial corridor taken up with residences. I mean, that's.
I think we're looking for flexibility in all this.
Yeah, I think so.
Having it be affordable for the applicants.
Exactly.
So with that, as in the, in the background of, as we look at this.
So I'll come, I'll ask Matt and then when we bring it back, I'll just say, you know, what zones doesn't make sense. I'll have to also look at the general plan and see if there's allowed any, I mean, commercial allows, we've done a couple here. You did one out in Bryant Park, Bryant, Bryant Street, I think recently, where it was like the auto body shop guy had a caretaker facility in the back.
That's right.
And, I mean, you know, anybody, cities have worked for, it's very common for them to have in the commercial zone, that provision, you know, the caretaker.
Right, which is fifty percent, no greater than fifty percent of the footprint of the building.
Is that what it is? Yeah, okay, but, you know, honestly, I mean, we might chart check the first time somebody goes in, but, you know, the only way we're gonna know is somebody's living there that's not the caretaker is if they get in a fight and the tenant turns the lamp. Yeah, because generally speaking, you know, it, the highest and best use is gonna take over on a commercial or industrial piece of property. But, you know, for instance, when I was in Moro Bay, everybody figured out that the old fish processing plant had the best views of the bay, so they became residential, you know. I mean, just so, you know, sometimes you want to not have residents there and sometimes you do, but obviously we already have it here. You might know of more, but that's the only one I know of, because it's the only one I've worked on.
Well, I think it's important to be able to, you know.
Have the flexibility.
Flex on it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, primary unit is the next item. It's, and it reads, second units shall not be permitted on a lot in addition to a guest house as defined in Article thirty-six of the chapter or similar structure. If a second unit has been approved on a lot, a guest house or other habitable accessory structure may not subsequently be approved unless the second unit is removed. So, we're into multiple structures.
You've seen this before, I mean, you know, had an actual applicant come in with, you know, talking about.
So I'm, I'm not totally against this, this one because obviously if they have a guest house, which means they don't have a kitchen, and it's separate from the house. If they wanted to have a second dwelling, well, they can convert that into a second dwelling. And it's done, right? Now their guest house reverts to a second dwelling and this doesn't, this allows for that, no problem. What it, what it's saying is that you now have this guest house, it's separate from the house. That's the only issue I would take, but I don't, the only thing I would say is if the guest house was attached to the house, which is rare, because it, I, I don't know how many people are gonna do that because what's the difference then between that and a mast, another bedroom and a bathroom, right? I mean, how, why would guest house be attached to houses, but I know they are? So it doesn't make much sense because if they're attached to the house, well, they're a guest room, they're not a guest house.
Chester, so define guest house.
Well, guest house as defined by the city of Ojai is, is a separate structure, right? A separate structure with its own entry that has a, a bathroom, but no cooking facility, no, no kitchen facilities.
That's the way I understand it.
It can have food prep, I mean, not, not just heating and, or cooking, but food prep. I mean, it really doesn't have.
Yeah, you can't have two of the three items. We had, we had the sanitation district guy come in here and get real, real clear about what that can and can not have.
If it was attached to a house, what usually happens is it has no internal doorway between the house and itself. So it has a separate entrance and people do that, you know, so, you know, because they're clearly gonna use it for some other reason than being part of their own living facilities. The only thing that I think that you need to be aware of here is that we need to have a different definition than a guest house for all this artists, I've told you this before. We get it constantly in here that somebody wants an artist's studio and they want it to be habitable. They want it, it to cool it during the winter summer, heat it during the su, well, I'm getting confused here. Anyway, and, and then it becomes habitable space. And you can clearly see by design for that particular person who's occupying it, they don't mean for it to be, you know, fireplace and rocking chair and I'm watching TV or a man cave. They really intend it to be a place that they're doing their craft, whatever that craft is, or maybe office space.
And no kitchen.
Yes, and so I, I still think that to prohibit, I agree, I think it should be prohibited. You can't have a guest house, but I think somewhere, with some way, we need to be creative and have some other definition for something other than a guest house for somebody who wants to do a workshop that is conditioned. Because once you condition it, then it falls into the guest house. And then we're telling people who've moved to Ojai who want to, they're therapists or they're potters or whatever they are and they just don't want to, yeah, so, I mean, somewhere along the line, we have to define it.
So where would we do, where would we define that? Would that be in this ordinance, you think?
I think the best thing to do is, is the deed restriction for number one. And Sherry, I think Sherry knows, we do those all the time. And that it clearly, the person agrees to and records a deed that says this is not to be used as habitable space and you are not to add a kitchen, blah, 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 blah. So there's no, when, if they were to get turned in and we had to go out for abatement, there's no question on the part of the person and what's recorded at the county. The city hasn't, the city has not authorized that to be a unit. And if it's, if it goes into escrow, whatever, it's gotta be turned back into what it was before.
Okay.
But I don't know if, if any other way, I mean, you're always gonna have this fine line, but I do think you, that we could try to do something or even look into what other cities are doing. Sherry has her hand up.
The city used to have an accessory structure ordinance that got inadvertently left out at some point. And it just stated, you can have three plumbing fixtures, but in the bathroom it can only be a sink and toilet and your third plumbing fixture is either an outdoor shower or another sink somewhere for your craft or whatever. But it was an accessory structure ordinance.
That makes sense to me that you can't have a shower or bathtub.
But no, no shower or bathtub inside.
Right. And I just think that we're always, we're always worried about the successor and interest, the person that buys the property who thinks it was a unit. And, and the, the, the way most people do it is, is they do a deed restrictions and then it shows up.
Well, that's the instrument that.
It might not.
That makes it, brings it out on the table for the prospective buyer to understand the function of that.
But it should be in our city files too, and although our files, our files might not have been the best in years past, you know, we're moving into the digital era, things are gonna be better, records are gonna be more complete. And so when somebody comes in and pulls a file for an address, it should be there, the deed restriction. It should, and it, and it should be very clearly defined what, what it is. So I just think that, again, it's, this is the one I struggle the most with because we're the ones that get yelled at when we're telling somebody, you know, hey, that's not a unit. But I still think that it's a really unique community in that people want to have something. And so we tell them all the time, you can have a workshop without it being heating and cool, you know, no conditioned space.
I think the red herring here is the term guest house because that's an antiquated term, pretty much.
Kind of, it seems like, for this community at least.
You know, I mean, really, we're talking, we're in an art community. So it's about studios, it's about a place to, whatever you're gonna do, you know, that has nothing to do with.
I think that most people, if you're gonna do live work in a small incidental scope, incidental to the residential, you still want people in your home. I mean, I just don't think you do. I mean, I know everybody's, you know, worries about that, your privacy and people coming in. And so it's, you know, whether you're doing therapy or artist or whatever, you still want that separate space, it seems to me.
Yeah.
Rosalie, I know you have something to.
I'm just trying to clarify, so, so you're, you're saying that, that you, you think this is fine, the way that it is?
No, I don't think it's fine the way it is. I think it's good, I think it's fine the way it is as a guest house, but I think we need to have a, maybe you are right, go ahead, finish.
And that we need to then further clarify this other thing, this other animal, so it's not continually confused with the guest house.
That's what I think.
Okay, and so, so would that, that would not be within this discussion to talk about an accessory structure ordinance?
Well, I think that I need to come back with something for your pondering. Because I think that there isn't enough, there's more than, there's more than two animals here, I think there's a third.
More dwellings here. We're talking about the second dwelling, but we're also, we're actually talking about the, the, the other dwelling on most houses.
Well, except dwelling implies sleeping, right?
Well, dwelling, dwelling unit has to have a kitchen in it, it's not a unit unless it has a kitchen. But I think if we don't address it, what will happen is if we don't have clear rules, like Sherry's saying, the ones that we had before, people are always trying to skirt the issue and then they'll come in and say, well, I didn't really understand, I couldn't do this and this with that space, you know. I think it's better to have it defined and have it very clear what we're issuing and what you can and cannot do with it.
Do you want to come back with, with some sort of language that we can?
For artists.
Discuss next time.
Yeah.
Okay.
But keep the guest house because you can go for a CUP and have people sleep there and have a full bathroom and all that for the guest house, but then the accessory has the deed restriction on it, where you don't sleep in there.
Right.
Okay, just to make sure.
Good point, good point, Sherry. All right, lot size. And it reads, and it reads.
I was also gonna, if I could just back up for a minute, since we were talking about uses in the commercial zone, maybe the commercial zone as the caretaker facilities and stuff like that might be a place where you also want to look into putting your tiny houses. Because I think generally speaking, all houses with axles aren't gonna be allowed in any of these zone districts. And maybe that's an easy way for people to be both beneficial, beneficial in the community. It's not, it's not gonna meet that need of a community, but for business owners to have someone on the property and then somebody also to have a place for a home, might, might, you know, might look at that. I mean, I've worked in a community before where every, every school had one on the school grounds. So they had a caretaker that watched the school, say, had no vandalism. and they just had a mom and pop that lived in a, in a tiny home that happened to be a trailer. But, you know, it was met the needs of both, both people. The school had someone there on site twenty-four seven, you know, or basically at night. So, there might be some other places you can look at the zoning, Chester, for the tiny houses, I think.
Okay.
Okay. Lot size.
Well, okay, go ahead, sorry, Steve.
You want to backtrack?
No, 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 I didn't realize you didn't read it yet.
Okay, the minimum lot area shall be ten thousand nine hundred square feet in all zones, except for the village mixed-use zone, where the minimum lot area shall be eighty-five hundred square feet.
Well, there's, um, a lot of different areas, including state law, I, doesn't have a minimum. I thought it had a five thousand square foot minimum, but I see that now it has none. And to me, this all goes to item, the next item, lot coverage setbacks and heights. If you can, if you can fulfill those requirements, then it could go on any size lot, if it fulfills those requirements. So, I, I, my personal opinion is that you, if we're trying to, you know, remove restrictions to this, is have each one of these second units comply with lot coverage setbacks and heights, and that should be the requirement to the size of the lot. That's my personal opinion.
Rosalie?
Yeah, I totally, I really disagree on this. I think we're, we really, we are already so much smaller than what, um, the county. The county requires an acre, um, to have a second dwelling unit, and I think at ten thousand nine hundred, um, again, it's, you know, you're, you're, then you're talking about neighborhoods that, you're really talking about neighborhood impacts if you're allowing second dwelling units in, um, so many more spaces, and, and they do come with cars, and it's, it is more, uh, more cars, more, um, pollution, more everything, when, if you, if you really open it up that much more for anybody to have, um, a second unit in their backyard, and, and I just, I just think there's, uh, you know, I think the lot coverage does not, you know, preserve the green space the way limiting second units, um, to slightly larger lots. I mean, ten thousand nine hundred is not a big lot.
It's quarter acre.
It's, it's, yeah, it's quarter acre, yeah. Um, and, um, I think, you know, for those of us who live in just regular, unregular lots and middle-class neighborhoods, um, you're really talking about, um, to me, adding a lot of impacts that, um, you know, I think get in the way of the things we're trying to accomplish, which is being more bikeable and walkable and all those other things.
So, you know, this is interesting, because you brought up the county, and I actually happened to be at the county a couple weeks ago, pulling, getting some permits for a project, and while I was waiting, I picked this up. And, um, yes, you do have to have an acre or more to do a second dwelling unit in the county, but I also noticed that they have a limit on how many units could be built. So, and the reason I bring that up is, I'm, I mean, this would have to be explored more. I do not know what the answer is. I think traffic's a concern, I think parking is a concern, but what if somebody put in like a hundred and fifty square foot?
Tiny home.
Tiny home, and one, on one of those smaller units, and, and it met the lot coverage and the setbacks and height, and the parking and traffic that was looked at. You know, I don't know what that answers yet, but yeah, let's just say it happened. And, but then we're also looking at sustainability, and, you know, we don't want to build it out. Could there be over a year, only certain amount of permits that would be released to kind of regulate it so that it doesn't become overbuilt? But we, I mean, we know we want the housing, we know we need it.
Well, that, I'm glad you brought that up, Kathleen, because I have it on size of units here, my, my notes, and, you know, um, I agree that ten thousand square foot is a, is a relatively small lot. So, what would, what can you do with a smaller piece? And so, what I was going to suggest on the size of units was that ten thou, between five thousand and ten thousand square foot lots, that you would restrict the size to, let's say, a tiny home. Rare minimal impact, you, you can now have that alternative space that you need for your art, you know, if you're, the, the, the creative person that needs a place to rent, it's like a perfect situation for that kind of thing. Now, again, how many people in reality are going to be able to do it? That's, that's the question, because you have, you know, well, there's costs involved, number one. You have to pay the sewage fee, you have to do all those fees, and you still have the lot coverage, the setbacks, and the heights to consider in all of those things. So, if you restrict, you know, so my, my thought was to restrict ten thousand and below to a maximum of, let's say, three hundred square feet or two hundred fifty, whatever the tiny home, uh, maximum would be. And that gets into the tiny home discussion, which.
But, you know, people, people, you know, when you, people live, decide to live in certain places based on the use, and what you can do in that use, okay? I'm a single mom, I have, I have a kid. I don't, you know, I'm not comfortable with there being, in, being in a neighborhood that allows willy-nilly second units, because.
Are you calling tiny homes willy-nilly?
No, I think they're the best, I think they're a beautiful option, I really do. But, um, you know, I think that it's sort of like vacation rentals in that sense, that people buy in certain zones because, and, and, and given, you know, there are certain parameters that I know, that, you know, on my street, there isn't going to be a whole bunch of second units, and that, that whole neighborhood is like that. There are some larger parcels, and, you know, we, we, we make these choices because we want to live a certain way, and we want to feel, in my case, more safe. That feels safer to me, to live in a place where, um, you know, um, the, the people, and people have built illegally, um, and, and I see what happens when second units have gone in in these small places, small lots, and, um, it has, it introduces a lot of, um, just a lot, a lot of other elements to the community that, um, you know.
But can't you, can't you see regulating those elements, though?
Well, I mean.
Like, for instance, let's talk of, for instance, a tiny home, okay? Let's say it's restricted to two hundred fifty square feet, which is a fairly small unit. You know that, you know, the occupancy could be restricted. Okay, so, who, what, you know, what's.
What's in the occupancy?
No, you can't.
No, you can't.
You can't, what do you mean, you can't?
Are you saying the number of people in it?
That you can, that can live in a tiny home?
You can't do that. Not unless you're doing, you're somebody providing.
I thought we had a restriction on our guest house, too. Uh, I thought in our ordinance, it does say, uh, maximum, maximum amount of people, no? Two.
That's an efficiency unit by the State of California Health and Safety, like, unit, you think, unit, I mean, code. We're not allowed to, we're not allowed to tell people, we don't define families, that's been out for years and years and years.
Okay.
You can't define families, and you can't tell people how many people can live, unless you're Section Eight housing, and you're, and, and you're affordable housing, you're paying for it, then you can tell people, you can't force, like, you can't force ten affordable housing, you can't for, for, you can't force ten people to live in a two-bedroom house, and you're getting paid Section Eight, Eight, um, funding. That's why people think you can limit, but the city can't do that. The city can't go and tell people, "You've got eight people in a two-bedroom house, you can't live there."
Okay.
That's just, you know, that's how they define themselves. Just saying.
How many people can fit in a tiny home?
Well, he was saying efficiency is for two, when I read that definition, but obviously, there's some practicalities to it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's like by design. Yeah.
One would hope.
Okay.
Can you get back on track, where you're?
Well, the, the, the question is whether or not, um, it's going to get more into the tiny home question later on, and it keeps bringing up that point. Are there provisions to allow for options, other options, to exist under ten thousand square foot? And Rosalie seems to not think so. I seem to, I, my personal opinion is that other jurisdictions, jurisdictions, like Fresno, and, um, they've gone down to five thousand feet, and there's still, the idea that everybody's going to do it is, we just, it's just, we got to get over that. Not everybody does that.
Can you tell them what the minimum lot size is in, in Fresno?
Yeah, that's what I've heard, that, I've got their.
Oh, I mean, because these lot sizes we have in Ojai here are extremely large.
Yeah.
Most urban cities don't have lot sizes of ten thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Most urban cities I've worked in, it's like five thousand, six thousand. So, what's their minimum lots, I mean, comparatively, what's the minimum?
I think the minimum, I, I think, uh, someone in the audience may speak on this better. Vina, do you know? I just read the.
So, we're talking about Fresno here?
Yeah, but do we, I mean, do we want to be Fresno? I mean, why are we?
No, I'm just saying that other, it's just.
Yeah, but that's.
What I'm saying is why, what I, what I'm saying is that I believe that we're moving into an, a, a phase of urbanization, where we're moving closer in, not out, okay? Like it or not, we need more rental spaces, okay? And it, it's just, it's just those things. Now, what's the best option for that? What's the best option?
Well, I think it's building out the ten thousand nine hundred and more spaces that we already have in the city, not adding more. There's plenty of, there's plenty of lots that are that size and larger.
Okay.
Okay, that, that haven't been built out. So, why, why start, you know, messing with something when we don't really know the impacts of what it will be? You know, if we're, we're trying to encourage second unit building, that's fine, but why not, why not at least wait till we've maxed out the existing space before we start adding things that may have unintended consequences?
That's a good point.
So, Vina, you want, do you have a figure for us from the square footage, lot square footage?
Yeah, the city of Fresno is five thousand square feet.
That's their minimum lot size?
That's what they have allowed for.
Okay.
The tiny homes on wheels.
I'm asking, I'm asking comparatively, our minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet. So, we require ten thousand nine hundred for a second unit. If, oh, if Fresno allows five thousand for a second unit, what is their lot size? You can't compare apples and apples unless you know what their biggest district is. I mean, my suggestion on this is that, I don't know where the extra nine hundred square feet comes from, but in most of the residential zone districts, like the R1, it's ten.
Right.
So, it seems to me like the very least, you should just make it code terminus, or whatever, with the same minimum lot size. So, which would be one acre in some, and two acres in others, and, I mean, if the property is non-conforming, I don't know, but this ten-nine seems odd to me.
Do we have an idea of the housing stock that is below the ten thousand square foot lot size in, in our community? I, I know we've asked before, and it's a hard one.
Yeah, we, we have a whole list here.
You know, there's.
I mean, has anyone compiled the information, I mean, do we have a thousand units?
Sherry, go through the list.
Do we have a hundred units? I, I have no idea. I mean, this could be, you think it's more than, okay, a lot.
So, I could, I could look into, um, seeing if, if we could get some kind of, um, information from SCAG. They're the only ones that have GIS information for us.
We just need this tabulated.
Yeah.
Like, if we knew that there was.
It would help, I think, give us a.
Under this, or.
Right. Yeah.
I know there are.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay.
May I?
Do you want to interject?
There is a, excuse me, just one comment. Uh, I have clients who are not necessarily the city of Ojai, but the county of Ventura, within Ojai, like off of, um, thirty-three, and they're in the Ojai impact traffic area, and they're ten thousand square feet, and they know they want to do a second dwelling unit, but they can't because they're not within that minimum square footage requirement for the lot size.
Okay. Are they in the county?
They're the county.
Which is one acre.
But I know there are many areas that have that.
Right. And that's, that's because of the traffic mitigation that the county put, uh, attributes to Highway thirty-three.
Correct.
Yeah.
Whereas you get outside of our valley, they do, then the square footages go up, and they allow.
Yes.
You know, they allow bigger units and all that.
Well, also, they're, are they on septic or sewer?
They're on sewer, because they're off of thirty.
Yeah.
Lots of times in the, in counties, the minimum lot requirement is really high, because then when you get in the county, you may be on a septic. And then that, and then that, are you on that?
Yeah, basically, I, I wanted to add a unit at my house, and I had a similar thing. Well, first of all, I'm under an acre, but I could have done even an accessory building, but then I had to go to public health, because I'm on, um, environmental health, on septic, and I would have to put a whole new septic system in, which was like.
That's very common in the county.
I didn't do it.
So, it's, there's all these exceptions, too. You might get someplace close in to an urbanized core within a county that has sewer, but generally speaking, those acre minimums are because years ago, I mean, it just depends on where you are, but years ago, county minimums for, for having a house on a septic was an acre. In lots of places now in the state of California, it's two, because they're going to follow that, you know, fouling your water. So, I mean, like, there's lots of things that go into, to why certain zoning ordinances were written the way they are, you know? As you guys keep on asking me, "Why, why, why?"
Right, right.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm in kind of, I, I think the compromise here for this issue here would be to, let's get a list. I think that's a good idea. I would like to know, um, it's easy to do, it's all in a spreadsheet. Let's get an inventory of how many houses are ten thousand and above, and let's, can we use ten thousand? Are you okay with that? Okay, choose ten thousand and above, and see what that number is, because we could be arguing over stuff that's not really.
Right, we don't know, it's speculative at this point.
So, I don't want to keep, you know, going down there. I'd like to see that, though, because it may be very revealing.
So, is that possible, Kathleen, the?
Um, yeah, Sherry says she can do it, that's good.
Okay, Sherry.
Um, and that we can also, we can also contact SCAG, SCAG, and see if they can give us maps, but, you know, unfortunately, we don't have our own GIS person, but they may have that, that layer there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, so, we can move on?
Yep.
Okay? Lot coverage setbacks and heights, I think this is, a lot of it comes down to this. And it's very simple, "The following regulations of the zone where the lot is located upon which the second unit is to be constructed shall be met: A, lot coverage, front, rear, and side setbacks, and C, height and stories." So, you got lot coverage, setbacks, and height, a number of stories.
I see, I see there's no problem with this one at all.
I don't either, I think, I mean, it is what it is. Why would we mess with it?
Yeah.
Yeah, John? Okay, good. Check it off, all right, good. Size of units.
Okay.
This is, this is a little more interesting, yeah. "The maximum size of the floor of a second unit shall not exceed six hundred and forty square feet."
Now, back when.
This is two thousand and three, right, John?
Yep.
That, that came, that happened?
Yep.
You have any background for us on that at all, or?
Um, we wanted the units to be as small as we could make them. I don't remember all the thinking that went into that, but.
Small's better?
Well, it was just to not overwhelm a residential area with big, like, you could build a second house on the property, kind of thing. We really wanted to be.
It was interesting, because I noticed, uh, I was going, I went back to that two thousand and three on our previous packet, and, uh, the former attorney, uh, Monty Witters, provided a preliminary to the draft, and, uh, he broke it down, and it wasn't adopted, but his suggestion was that, uh, that the draft orders, ordinance provide that a six hundred and forty square foot detached unit would be permitted on a lot ten thousand square feet, but less than twenty thousand square feet, or a half acre. A second residential unit of eight hundred square feet would be permitted on a lot that exceeds twenty thousand square feet, but less than one acre. And then finally, a maximum size second residential, residential unit of twelve hundred square feet would be permitted on lots of one acre or more. So, he's establishing a hierarchy of, you know, proportions and relationships to the size of the lot, which, to me, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense to me, too.
Um, and it tops out at twelve hundred, which is the state, you know, mandate, I guess, for, for default. I like that idea, uh, because I think it's, it's proportionate, it relates to the size, and, uh, that, to me, makes sense. There's a scalability to it.
And then there's possibly looking at the lots that are less in square footage and having a lesser sized unit.
Yeah, that's the other part of the equation, sure.
That's, that's why, when we see that inventory, that's why I had that, the, the three hundred square foot max at one, at one equation, but I read that as well, and I think that's.
So, there shouldn't be a minimum size, necessarily.
That's right.
Well, whatever that is.
Yeah, I think the state, yeah, was a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
So, that's.
I, I like that made, I like that formula. I, I read it multiple times, and, and I, I kind of agree with it. I don't know why it wasn't adopted, it seemed very reasonable.
It seemed a lot simpler to just have one number and.
Yeah, and then the other thing, too, is, um, you know, the parking, the parking, well, we're going to get to that next, and it has to do with, um, you know, if you have, if you have a twelve hundred square foot second unit potentially, you could have a couple bedrooms in there.
Oh, yeah, it's a regular house, but that's usually in bigger, less acre and above. You're talking for Simmon Hill and places like that, where they have the property to do that.
You could accommodate for parking on site.
You could accommodate for parking on site and that potentially wouldn't be an issue.
Well, Persimmon Hill is more like two and three acres. I think, I think an acre might be small for, to construct a whole other second house on it. I would just look at that needing to be a little bit bigger to go that high. The lot should be bigger to go up to 1,200. It should be more like a Persimmon Hill or something like that, where you have at least a couple acres or something like that to build a whole other second house. You're talking a three-bedroom, two-bath house with, yeah, at least.
1,200 square feet?
Well, 1,200, I mean, that's a whole other house. And then you're talking, how many more people? Three, four people? How many cars? Three, four cars? Two, three, four cars? I mean, I think, I think a lot realistically to keep those cars off the street and to really meet the parking, I think you gotta be talking about a larger lot when you're getting to be that big.
Yeah. I'm okay with that. I just find, I just find, you know, we did a few projects up in Persimmon Hill and it was very, very out of scale to stay at 640 square feet in that area. It just didn't seem right. It seemed like, oh God, why are we paying a penalty for, you know, someone else's spot? So I'm in agreement that there's some number that makes sense in Persimmon Hill. It makes sense. And what that is.
Can we say a couple acres?
I, I think I would like to see, once I see that, we see the spreadsheet of, I would like to see the houses broke down or the, or the areas broke down by areas and see how many we're really talking about. Then we can come up with a formula. Yeah, we can come up with a formula.
And in between that 800 square feet, because I know 640 square feet for, you know, a couple concerned live in a 640 square feet, but if you have a child or something, now you're really, you're up against it.
Well, Ventura County in the series 700, that, that at least allows you a little bit more. And, and if we can change the square footage to be calculated from the inside of the framing, that helps hugely, you know, to that. So those are the kinds of things that really help.
That's something we've been asked, you know, as far as the sustainability direction.
What's that, the?
Measure from the inside of the house.
Yeah, inside of the framing versus.
Just remember when you're, when you're trying to have incentives, like the woman who spoke a little while ago, that you need to frame the ordinance in a way that it provides incentive. For instance, you would say you measure from the outside unless you provides, you know, and I, we could run this by this attorney.
I see, yeah.
Unless you provide sustainable materials and you are.
Great, that's great.
Lead or exist, then you can measure from the inside.
Absolutely, that's fantastic, yeah.
But to assume that because you're measuring from the inside, that people are going to put the extra money into using sustainable materials is really, you know, you've got to provide an incentive to people to do it.
Agreed.
I mean, there are people who will do it because it's the right thing to do, and there are people that will do it because you gave them incentive to do it.
Right.
Agreed.
In more cases not, the incentive is going to drive that.
Usually.
Okay.
That's good.
That's good, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So on that one, we're going to come.
General premise, we're.
Yeah, we're going to get a.
We're going to wait on square footages.
And I think then we can play around with, you know, kind of formulas and see what makes sense.
And I'll just remind you also that, you know, when you're talking about 1,200 square foot units, et cetera, you know, you also, you have to provide it by right to some extent, but you can also use the CUP. So if a, if a person is, is going to go bigger, then, you know, you might be able to weave something else in there, like, you know, you're on bigger acreage. I'm just thinking about, you know, how many trees, et cetera, how much. So the idea that these folks were talking about earlier, these cluster homes, you know, that's a concept that they have up north. They use a lot where, you know, it's a green belt around them and all the urbanization or the development is centered. And so if you're on four acres, you might want to have some kind of parameters where like if you put a second home on it, you're not over here and over there. You know, they're actually clustered together somewhat and they're preserving the open space. There's a lot of things to consider when you start putting in big home, big areas in, in the reverse that you're considering in the urban core. Because we certainly don't want people, you know, scattering the development on four acres and then taking down oak trees or whatever they're doing to, to accommodate that because they just don't want to see that other unit on their property.
Agreed.
That leads us to parking. Primary unit shall meet the minimum parking requirements of the applicable zone and one additional uncovered but onsite paved parking space shall be provided for second units. However, such parking spaces shall not be permitted in front yard setbacks.
Well, we have to tie the, we have to tie the parking if, if, we just have to think going down the line that if we make units bigger, we gotta think about that because that's going to be.
There's a relationship.
There's a relationship. We just have to remember that it's not necessarily only one. It's one because it's a 600 and, you know, 40 square feet. Right, when you get, well, eight even, you know, I mean, really 640, you can get two people in a 640, no problem. I mean, they have nice condos out at Woodland that are perfectly happy in them and they, you know, they have two cars. But anyway.
Okay. So there's a, there's a clause in there, a sentence that we need to address as pertaining to size of the allowable unit, allowable unit size and parking.
There's a couple items on that list that are kind of conflicting. One, this says the outside paved parking. And then on the, in our ordinance, it says that driveways are encouraged to be perviously, pervious material. So there's a little conflict there. I think we take the paved data there. I don't think it matters. I think because we're moving more into a pervious paving situation. That's one item. And the other, I think we take out, we shall be permitted in the front yard setback since people park there all the time for parking.
But the people who live there park there. Nobody parks.
But if there's enough parking in their front yard setback to accommodate another vehicle, why not stack parking? You're against that?
And then you got people parking in their front yard. I mean, tandem parking is different from.
The driveways and their front yard. That's the point. The point is you go, well, you go down most of the streets.
It won't work that way because the, because the tenants will be on the street. They'll be on the street because nobody parks in their garage because everybody uses their garage as storage. So everybody who, you know, puts their cars in their driveways and then everybody else is going to be shoved off into the street. That would be the way that it plays out. No?
That's how it is.
I mean, that's how it is now. I mean.
Yeah, but people park in their front yard setbacks all the time.
Right. I do. I do. And if I had a second unit, where would they park?
I can't park anywhere else. My driveway is in my front yard.
You talk about stacking in the driveway?
Yeah, if you have a long driveway.
What she's trying to clarify though is.
Not the front lawn, no.
Is we do.
Whatever it is these days.
In the apartment complexes, I've done a ton of apartment complexes, and when they provide garages and we have to count them as parking spaces, they end up full of junk. And all of a sudden, there's a parking problem and we're getting, and the city's getting tons of phone calls because there's no place for them to park. I mean, clearly, if they're already not using the garage as parking spaces, you can't count them. That's all she's trying to say is that if, if you go out to some street and people are not using their garage, then they can't come in and say, well, here's two, knowing it doesn't exist. That's all we're trying to say.
I agree with that.
Yeah. And so I think you just need to be aware that, that, that if, that if that's the situation, then you've got it, you know, we drive out there and you're not using your garage or we ask you to open your garage up and provide. Show me you can pull a car. I'm going to go out and do a final. I'm going to tell them, open your garage, pull cars in there and they're going, and they're not going to be able to do it. We can't encourage people to put the city in that, we're not, we don't want to be the police. We want people to be genuine and truthful with us. And if their garage is reused for parking and we can go out and we can go out there and they can pull their cars in, and then we see the other parking space, we're good. But if they're truly not using it that way, that's all we're saying is that now we've got a problem and now there's impacts in the neighborhood.
But is that the way it's written? Is that the way?
It's saying, well, I think it's saying you have to meet the minimum parking requirements, which is the two inside and one uncovered paved parking, but not in the front yard setback, which means that those two driveway spaces are driveway spaces, not, not for a tenant. So, so to understand what I'm saying, so the problem, the problem is, is that, so the, the, the original residential unit uses the two inside the garage and then you have someone parked in that driveway? You can't do that. I can't, the city of California is not going to allow you, a tenant has to operate independently. We can't use the same heater. We can't use the same air conditioner. And I can't ask you to move your car so I can get out. I'm a tenant. I have independent rights. And so, so then that means that then what happens is you and your wife or whoever, somebody's using the one in the garage and someone's using the one in the driveway. Those two are tandem and then I have the other one in the garage. You know, that's just the way it's going to go. I mean, I've seen it done that way, but that's all, just, you just have to be aware of that. Then when we go out there to final or we go do inspections, people can't be using them as storage. They have to know that, that there's, that, you know, if they get caught using the storage, then they've demonstrated it's parking. Otherwise, otherwise we should just say no parking at all because that's really what's going to happen. It just puts the city in a bad spot because we're, we become the police and going out there because we're encouraging somebody to say something really truly isn't their behavior. So I don't know, and I, and again, I think that this, this should be, you should look at these in two different situations. I don't think if somebody has an acre or two or three or four, we want them putting their cars up and along the street. So this only, this really only pertains.
They'll certainly have other options.
Right.
And it's important to note that it doesn't say deny the ability to park in your side yard setbacks.
No.
You can park in the side yard setbacks as well. So this is, relates completely to the front yard setback idea.
So I guess the idea gets down to that if a person, the parking is going to be then make it or break it for the person. That's what's going to happen. They're going to come in and say, I really want to do a second unit. I can meet lot coverage, but I can't meet the parking. Because truly, honestly, there are a lot of houses that you couldn't get it outside the front yard setback here in Ojai.
Yeah.
We should note that, or it's interesting to note that, I think the county requires a covered parking space for their second unit dwellings, and we're not doing that.
No, that would make it even more restrictive because now you have a structure and the structure has setbacks.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So, you know, and, and lots of cities would require, if you're, the smaller you get in the unit, that you also provide some type of storage, you know, for that person. Because again, you know, if you're living in like 300 square feet, you've either done like. Well, you either done what the gentleman said, you know, you're, you're the anti hoarder or you, or you have staff, you know? But, but again, you know, not every city does that. So it's just, it's just common problems you find when people are living closer together in smaller quarters. And what people see happens, a lot of cars, a lot of junk.
So I, I'm good with this, but then there was something about the paving you mentioned or?
Oh, yeah. Well, it's just a conflict. One, one place says, you know, it's required to be paved and the other one says we're encouraging pervious.
Yeah.
Those aren't, those are not conflicting. You can have pervious pavement. You have to have it paved. You cannot park on grass or dirt. That's a problem.
By gravel.
What?
Gravel, you can.
If you want to let them park on gravel, that's fine. Generally speaking, you know, then you end up with.
Gravel's not paved.
No, but I'm just saying, generally speaking, you know, people don't, most people have moved away from that because gravel, you know, you can't. Well, you.
Well, it depends on certain areas.
Then I'm out there, I'm out there telling people, so it has to be two and a half inches of gravel, blah, blah, blah. Then as it starts to go away, as it always does, then I'm out there, hey, put more gravel in. You know, that's how staff time the city should be utilized, that that's fine. But generally speaking, pervious pavers, pervious pavement, something that's a little bit longer lasting than gravel, but I'm fine if you wanted to gravel, but not on dirt and not on grass.
Right, but it says paved.
Yeah. But so you just need to be changed to say, and again, probably, you know, you know, pervious, if you want pervious, you can change it, I'm assuming you can change.
Pervious, just pervious.
Maybe this is one of those incentives.
That was our discussion last month. I remember bringing this up, but you're right, that could be one of the incentives. I mean, if somebody comes in with an actual detail with the construct, how they're going to construct this gravel driveway or parking space and it's up to, up to standards to accommodate a vehicle, then.
You could even put the, you know, the Hollywood strips. I mean, you could do whatever you want. Generally speaking, you know, you don't.
Most people are going to do paving. I'm, I'm just saying there's a little conflict between what I was reading and what it was saying.
I've worked in cities before where if you said unpaved front yard setback, people would be parking on the grass.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that.
That's how they would read that. I'm just saying, you know.
I want to make sure there's a permeable.
Yeah, yeah.
Option, more sustainable option.
So we need to clean up the language a little bit, but we're.
On the pave thing, just.
I'll do something and then you guys can pick it apart. I'll put something in there and something.
Give us, give us something to do.
And then I think that then depending on, then it should be added on that for every bedroom you add on, you're adding a parking space.
Right. That's going to work into the size relationship of, as the unit gets larger, we can assume there's going to be another bedroom.
I see no reason to make them covered or any of that, that nonsense. It doesn't seem to me like that. That just makes it too restrictive.
Okay. Let's talk about driveway street improvements. All street improvements required by the director in connection with the construction of the second unit shall be met. Driveways constructed of pervious materials or ribbon driveways shall be encouraged.
That's the, that's the.
That's the part two, right?
Right, the conflict, yeah.
I don't know, I mean, this is a little confusing to me because I don't know why with the whole intent of doing a second unit is that you're not, it's supposed to be by right and ministerial. So I'm not sure why we're conditioning it with street improvements. But I'm not sure. I mean, that might, that might pertain if we layered this, the new ordinance we're working on, but.
What kind of street improvements would we be, I mean, they got, they got a sidewalk or?
Well, those should already be there, right? There's a house.
And you have to get, it will be a permit anyway. You have to get an encroachment permit to cut into the street.
Yeah, but you shouldn't. So, so you know, there's already provisions in the code about how much pavement. I believe how wide your driveway can be. There's already restrictions in all of this, correct?
Right.
So I'm not really sure what.
Yeah, I don't see a real big purpose for it myself.
I think it might, people, it might scare people because people might think, oh my goodness, I'm going to get into.
I gotta pave the whole road in front of my house.
And it, it could be that if you had a second unit going off an alley or a through street. I mean, you know, I've had that happen before where, do we have through lots here in Ojai? Yeah.
I think this is going to be.
There's a street on the front and a street on the back. Okay. So, okay, so like full, yeah, so like I've worked in a city where we had a lot of them. And so the first unit faces this street and the second unit faces that street, you know, and so maybe there would be something like that or faces an alley. But I just think this is a little bit.
It's covered in our other ordinance.
Yeah, I think so.
I would just want to make.
Encroaching to public space, right?
Right. I would just want to make sure that it's, we're not talking about the street, you know, the curb, uh, street and gutter typical application when somebody does.
Well, you do commercial project.
Well, you get a permit, you have, if you cut into it, you have to get an encroachment permit.
Some cities might make you put in, you know, you know, they walk, when you have work for cities before, they walk you out and they look and see if the sidewalks cracked and they make you replace it. But I would hope we wouldn't be doing that for a second unit.
I mean, the way.
It just needs to be clear that it's not what it is and what it isn't.
Okay.
Because it's, the way it's worded says, all street improvements required by the director. Well, what's the director going to require? I mean.
Yeah, that's.
I'm going to require everything. No, I just think it's, I think it's just too open-ended. It would be.
It's way too general.
It's very, yeah.
Let's clarify that.
Anytime you see that word all, you better look at it closely, so.
And it's, it's certainly.
Do we want to strike this? Is that the consensus here?
I don't see a.
Except for the, except for the driveways shall be encouraged, we need to put someplace else because we're going to.
Why don't we put it under parking where it is?
Yeah, move it back up to parking.
Put it to parking.
Well, that was me, I probably should have moved it. That was probably just me doing that. And then on the, the next one, the modifications, I don't see any reason to specifically say you can't do modifications, but again, variances are super hard to get. You have to have real true specific land, you know, restrictions of whatever word you want to look at to describe it. They aren't easily gotten. We know that. So I'm not sure what, what in, what situation would, would warrant giving somebody a variance to do a second unit? I can't think of any. You know, the typical variance example they give is like, oh, if you're on a hill and the slope was really steep and, you know, a driver would put the driveway like this, then you're going to allow them to park in the front yard setback, you know? It would be something like that. It would have to be a land use limitation.
Because you're saying the criteria for a variance is so limited. We don't need this.
Well, no, I'm just saying that, right, what I'm saying is you shouldn't just tell somebody, I mean, if there is truly a need out there, some oddity, you know, very unusually shaped property or something with a real slope or some reason the person can't get in the setback because you want to allow them to cluster, something like that, then I, then I think maybe you shouldn't preclude it. I just don't know what circumstances you'd ever allow it.
I mean, like, couldn't it be like, let's just say they had, you know, like a creek went through their property. What if they had a large oak stand?
Well, I think.
And taking out the oaks.
Right.
Then I would say that would warn.
Right. And if there's that limited amount, why not just exit and let people apply for a variance and bring it before us and see if it, if it fulfills the requirements?
Well, I was just, I was just going to say that it could have been that it was just precluded altogether because maybe at the time, you know, years ago, people used to give variances out sort of freely.
This is an absolute statement. Yeah, I mean, it's like, there are no.
Yeah, yeah.
Variances permitted. So this is too restrictive.
Yeah, I see.
I think so. I think. I think so, I think that if you, I think it is, like, say, like, we were just saying, you know, there's a historic grove of trees or there's a slope or something like that, and the person wants to, you know, move the unit or they're in one of these zone districts that has huge setbacks and they want the houses to be closer as they want that feeling of community, you know? I could see, you know, but I think what it's trying to say is, you're not going to use them to circumvent parking or any of the minimums that are here to squeeze it in. And certainly, we all understand that it has to be, you know, run, a land limitation.
We know that going into-
Yeah.
But is that something that we should include in the language if we're going to modify it so that it's a cue to the applicant that-
So, they understand the terms of a variance?
Because it's, right, because it's, or something, because it's such a balance with the amount of time that takes up with staff, that lets, let's-
It is a good idea, yeah.
Right, and then, I mean, we're sitting here saying we understand it, but, you know, we're not always going to be sitting up here. Somebody else will be, new staff at some point. So, if the language is clear, then there's no question, yeah.
So, like, for instance, if you're going to do a unit downtown and they couldn't meet the parking, but they're next to a transit stop, you know? I mean, I don't know, a trolley stop, I mean, years down the road, somebody might say, I mean, you know, hey, there, I mean, I don't know the situation really, but I think that's, the parking is the one that gives me the greatest concern that that would be where you would really want to say, no, you know, you must provide the parking. So, parking's the real, the non-starter. Everything else, I think, lot coverage, et cetera, et cetera, is not, you know, it's going to be very clear whether there's some grounds for lot coverage.
So, can you draft like a paragraph that can address the variables to some degree?
See, I don't, okay, yeah.
I think it's important that any applicant have a, I mean, it's taken years for me to understand, and I'm up here alive. So, you know, someone coming off the street, "Oh, I'll get a variance."
Most cities just-
They don't know what that is.
No, they don't, they've heard the word. But I think, and variances are really expensive too. So, you know, it doesn't, we're just, we're trying to make this on the other side more affordable for people. So, the more, you know, it's starting getting expensive too.
So, you'll work that up, huh?
Yeah, I'll do something for you.
Okay, good.
Just some language that then you can move around.
Yes. Okay. Final page. Building code. Should be pretty straightforward, let's see. Second units including any portion of a pre-existing primary unit which would be incorporated into a second unit shall comply with the minimum standard of Title 24 California Code of Regulations. The uniform building, plumbing, housing, mechanical codes, the National Electrical Code, fire, health, safety code, and the noise insulation standards applicable at the time the building permit for the second unit is issued or when the second unit is permitted by the director, whichever is most recent. Any condition of the primary unit which is detrimental to health and safety shall also be corrected by the applicant. So, we go by the California Code of Regulations. That's the Title 24. The uniform building-
I don't think that's, I don't think that's applicable anymore.
No more applicable anymore, no, this goes back.
So, I'll revise this and bring it back.
Bring us up to current code.
Yeah, current code. Also, I don't think that any condition of the primary unit which is detrimental shall also be corrected. Staff is not going in and doing inspection of the primary unit when we're doing second units. We're just not doing that.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I don't think, I don't think we should be telling people, I mean, obviously, if there's this health and safety issue on their, on the house and an inspector walks by and sees something, he's going to have to address it because that's his duty to do that. But we're not going to go in and inspect your whole house. Again, these are the kind of things that people see and it gives them great concern because they're thinking, oh, well, I would want to do a second unit, but these people are going to walk through my house.
Right.
And I don't see any reason to give people the impression that that's what we're going to do.
They're going to get an inspection, all right.
No, but I mean, yeah, but if somebody walks by and there's, you know, they've jumped the electrical or something, you know, certainly they're going to, but we're not proactively going to go through their house.
But you're saying that, that's a decision that you're making. In other words, what if, God forbid, we ever have another development director? But if we did, I mean, isn't it, is there a discretion to?
I don't think so. I don't think that, that the building, I mean, I think you're reaching beyond, if it's not visible from the outside, I don't think that there's anything, are you aware of anything, Sherri? I don't think so. I don't think there's anything that gives us a right to go into someone's house if they have a building permit on their property. I mean, obviously, if we see something, that, but yeah, I mean, the idea that, it just, to me, reads very invasive, you know? Yes, I don't like the language. I think it could be very, a big turnoff to people.
So, we'll strike that, huh? And then correct the, bring current, the actual codes that are in place.
I'd like to just read into the discussion, you know, bringing back in the tiny home question. And this is just for your frame of reference in future discussions. Building codes would not apply to tiny homes on wheels. The construction is governed by state law, okay? They're considered, mobile homes are permitted. A tiny home on wheels is technically a mobile home, but it's substantially different from a mobile home in design and character. Yes, typical mobile homes should be prohibited unless it meets city definition of city home on wheels. Which is, again, I think that the tiny home community is looking to add its own definition as other communities have around the nation to their specific structures. And allowing the axle to be on there would be regulated by state law and would be exempt from that code. Just, I'm just reading that into the record, nothing to really add to it.
So, my experience with mobile homes is when it comes to those inspections, the state actually sends out their own inspector to look at all those pertinent issues. It would be outside of the jurisdiction of the city-
If they were considered to be used, yes.
As it pertains directly to the home itself. Now, the site work and all that would be-
Yes, the site work would be all to code.
So, we're getting to, this is something that's going to be an interesting discussion when we, when we get there. It does complicate things, so.
So, on the next one, the sewer and septic, I think, just to move it along, that we've all decided that they don't have to be commonly metered. That's, that's, we did that with the compliance unit, we saw no reason to have them commonly metered. You know, I don't know why, normally in most cities, they want them separately metered because that's what kind of signifies to someone it's a legitimate unit. It has its own address, its own meter, it's functioning on its own. In some cities, the meter, there's a cost to the meter. Here, I understand it doesn't matter one way or the other. If you've got a meter, you don't have a meter, it's just a matter of portioning the utility, the utility bill out. But I don't, I think it's really up to the person.
It changes the financing parameters of the property.
Oh, it does?
So, you can be creating unintended consequences, but yeah, because it's looked at as units then, by some lenders as opposed to not, so.
So, is there a detriment to just leaving it up to the choice? That's what we did in the compliance unit.
I mean, I mean, the only detriment is that people make choices that they don't necessarily know how it's going to impact them down the line if they go to refinance or sell their property. So, I mean, I think in this case, it's-
Didn't you want to leave it commonly metered?
Uh, no, not necessarily. I mean, there's certainly a-
It would be upon the owner to understand that, you know, when it comes to the financing.
Well, that's, well, that's true, that's true. But there's, there's certain things, and we can talk about, there's certain other things that I think if the city encourages a certain practice, could then, and this is not that practice, but could then have a detrimental effect on the whole neighborhood if they, if they start mucking around with something that interferes with people's ability to finance the property or refinance the property. So, that's just something to think about because, you know, if we, if we are encouraging, well, we'll get to it when we get down to mobile homes because there's a point I have to make about that and financing and whatnot, so. But this is, I don't think this has to remain this way.
So, as a, so in terms of sewer and septic, it's, it's, you know, it's pretty straightforward. We have our sanitary district telling us what is going to be required there, so. Yeah, please, come for. You need to tell us who, your name.
Okay, my name's Anita Hendricks, I live at 302 North Signal Street. Just a little piece of information, and you can double-check this. I think for Section 8, the unit has to be separately metered. I don't, so I'm a little concerned-
Section 8 of-
Section 8 is when people are very low income-
Right, that's a federal-
They receive assistance from the government. And I believe, and maybe somebody else can double-check me on this, but-
You can check, I don't know.
They need, those units need to be, I believe, separately metered. So, this would preclude if it were, they had to be compound, whatever you're calling it, it would be a detriment to those people who are trying to get Section 8 who already are having extremely difficult time in Ojai getting a place to live. But double-check it.
That is, I don't know, I mean, that makes sense because, like I said, most rentals are intended to operate independent and having separate utilities would be operating independent. But what she's saying about finding housing that will utilize the Section 8, they get the vouchers and they can't find anything here, that is true. Heard that from help of Ojai.
So.
Maybe there could be, like I said, an incentive for, I don't know if it should all be across the board, everybody have the separate units because that might preclude some people who want to have a, you know, have these units. Maybe it would be too costly for them to have a separate ones, I don't know. But maybe there would be an incentive for those people who wanted to provide the separate units so that we would have more Section 8 rentals available.
Well, as long as we don't require a common meter hookup, then the option exists to do what needs to be done.
It seemed to work in the compliance, we just kind of said either or.
It's actually way better. The majority of people applying for new, new second units don't want a commonly metered because it throws them into that higher tier.
Yes, the higher tiers.
And they have to pay a lot more money. Cost of electricity comes into play, huh?
And then they have to convince the tenant they use so much, huh? As they guesstimate.
Stop flushing.
But as, in terms of this language here, we're, we're not going to require that.
No, I did, we kind of had a long discussion on that, yeah.
That's good to know, Sherri, that's, it's interesting, that's a sign of the times. Design criteria. Attached second units shall be attached to the primary unit by common wall, floor, ceiling. Let me read that one more time, because-
It does say that, by the way. And I'm going to talk about that.
Yeah.
It actually says that.
Attached second units shall be attached to the primary unit by a common wall, floor, ceiling. Two, the second unit shall include a separate entrance, kitchen, and bathroom. Three, the second unit shall mirror or complement the primary residence in form, height, number of stories, material, and color. The second unit shall be placed on a lot in such a manner so as to preserve wherever possible significant visual features such as mountain views as seen from adjoining properties. It shall be recommended and encouraged that the second unit shall not obstruct solar access. The doors and windows be placed to preserve the privacy of adjoining properties and that translucent glazing and window placement towards the existing onsite residence shall be used whenever possible.
First question I got for Kathleen is-
Yes, sir.
It starts out with attached second units. So, is this referring to, I'm sure it's not, but it sure sounds like it should be, referring to only second units that are attached? Yeah.
Oh, I might have done that, I might have actually clipped it in wrong. I can look it up and see, hold on. It's just design criteria. I mean, I don't think that they're intended to be all-inclusive. Like, you know, you have to do one, two, and three, it's like-
But is it referring to just attached second units? Because it keeps-
No.
So, that's just that particular-
Oh, 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 I get it. Yeah, that reads very differently.
It only takes one comma, parentheses.
I clipped that stuff in from the internet, so it might have been, so I was moving it around.
Oh, got it.
You can't believe this, but usually when I'm working, five million people are talking to me at the same time. Okay, yes, it's missing the one.
Okay.
So, it says, and it just is, there's no, maybe I had to pull these out and put them in separate categories, you know, because that's not how, so, it's missing the one, Rosalie's right. I think this design criteria is very hard to, especially three is almost impossible. Keep in mind, this is a ministerial permit by right, goes to the building department, not to the planning department. Our minimum set, our minimum supplemental requirements are not going to say, "You show us a view shed."
Right.
"You show us where your property, adjacent property windows are." I mean, you know, it doesn't come in with that stuff. No one, no one would know because they're going to come in with a site plan, shows their lot. They're going to come in and show, you know, where it's sitting on. Nobody's going to go out, this isn't a CUP or anything. Nobody's going to go out and look at where the views are. And the solar ordinance only kicks in, I think, 17 feet, 15? So, you know, they'll have to do that if the structure's over that height. But I just want to say that lots of times, this is assuming that the existing primary unit has got nice architectural design. Often, they don't. They're just stucco boxes, so I don't know, I don't know why we would want something in form, height. I mean, certainly if you're building a new structure, the, the primary residence is very nice. But in lots, in lots of instances, like the cross, we worked on Blanche, the existing, what the person wanted to do for the second unit was a way higher standard than what the existing house is, but they're coming in and fixing the house subsequent. So, that, so that was one of those things that I had to say, "Oh, hey, when it brought it before you, this isn't any, doesn't even look anything like the house, but they're improving the whole lot." So, you know, it's good intentions, but I don't know how in the world anybody's seen where the mountain views are because that, we're not going to, if I started to tell people, "You have to do a second unit and go out, and by the way, I want, you know, perspective views of the mountains and I want to know where all your neighbors-"
Do it ministerially.
Can't do a ministerial. It's, and that's why it gets back to this, you know, using the CUP, if you're going to go in the bigger lots where you do have views, then you need to, then you need to have some kind of parameter that kicks them up to a CUP so you can look at this stuff. But let's not kid ourselves, this is impossible to see and still maintain them inexpensively, ministerially, trying to facilitate them. You're going in two different opposite directions there.
So, are you recommending just X-ing out three or giving some attempt to quantify?
I think you should just change it. You should just say, you know, that it be compatible with or not in-
With the area, not just the house itself?
You know, you can come up, yeah, you know, so we're not, somebody doesn't have something that's the Taj Mahal in the middle of a craftsman neighborhood. It's more like it has to be, you know, hard, you know, it can't be the outlier versus it has to be just like something else.
Can you craft the language up in there?
I'll try to find something.
I would like to say a lot of work went into item three.
I could see that, I could see, I could see that, actually.
I think it's-
Each one of those items in there was a big issue that came up.
How were they going to enforce it, though? Was that up to the enforcement to figure that out, or?
I don't know, I don't know.
Because I think that's the crux of the problem by having that detail in there.
You can certainly do it.
We had people that said, "We don't want someone putting a second unit here because it's going to block my view of the mountains."
Right.
I don't know how you, how do you regulate that?
It's a great thought.
Yeah, I mean, there was a lot of discussion about that.
You certainly could do that with the conditional use permit. A discretionary permit, and you could do, you could just assume that, you know, some, you know, if you're over an acre, you may have a view or whatever.
Every second story has to go through a DRP, right? So-
Or, you know, you could say any, any second unit placed on a slope greater than blah, 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 which then puts it up on a hill or this or that, you know? We already have those hillside requirements. There's, there's other ways to get at that particular situation than, because I can just tell you right now, I bet nobody's looked at any of the second units for this because you're not getting these things in, view sheds, et cetera. They're expensive. We generally get yelled at, almost every day, we ask people for perspective views or simulations.
So, are you saying that when we get, when we sort of circle back to the possibility of allowing bigger units on larger lots, that we should think about changing them from ministerial permits to CUPs?
I just think you need to consider doing a layered type thing, like, what would you allow? What would be the minimum you would allow or the maximum you'd allow that you think creates the minimum amount that impacts the neighborhood? And then what going above that then requires a CUP? And then that CUP, what would be the findings that you'd make? Well, you're going to make these same findings that are already here, that it's compatible with the neighborhood, that-
But is that the same, is that yes? Did I say something different than that?
Well, I guess, yeah, I guess, I guess you did say, but I just think it's- think it's, it's, you still have to maintain, or it would be prudent to main, saying, maintain something in that zone district that's by right. Not to, not to push everybody who's over an acre to a CUP.
Right.
Just push everybody who's over an acre, or whatever the threshold you want, that wants to do something that's bigger than six forty, that you're, you know, because there might be unintended consequences you've not thought of, so let's look at that a little bit more thoroughly. Let's have him bring in, you know, these types of things.
I'm fine with that.
I'm just, I'm just trying to say it out loud now, so we don't forget that that's
Right.
a part of the process that we have to sort of revisit next time.
I just was trying to clarify that, I don't think that I'm asking for everyone who has a big piece of property to have higher thresholds, just if they want to go above the baseline.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And we got to figure that baseline still, yeah.
Okay. Mobile homes.
Ooh, yeah.
Except for those fitting the definition of Section eighteen zero zero seven of the Health and Safety Code, a travel and travel, how's this read? And, mobile homes and travel trailers shall not be permitted as second units, with that one exception. So Chester.
Yeah, well, first of all, I'm going to suggest, and I want to suggest, that I really think this tiny home thing needs a lot more consideration, I mean, than what we can build into here. In fact, I would like to suggest an ad hoc committee to really, you know, deal with this issue in thorough, so that it can be presented in a complete way. Because out of context, it affects so many different areas as we, as I've noted, three or four, the design criteria effects, it, it, it'll, um, the square footage, the size, um, and other parameters. And there are a lot of benefits in considering this, that, I don't know that, I had a chance to think about going to that workshop the other day. So let's say we, we do have a housing, um, shortage here in Ojai. What is the best way to, to deal with that housing, um, shortage? There's, there's not a lot of options with properties that are built out the way they are to really create affordable housing that's other than a Section 8 housing. The way to do that is affordable with design, by design. Affordable by design, the tiny homes, the, the, the thing about them is that's what they are, in essence, they're affordable by design. So allowing them to be used, uh, or to be, uh, put on property, there's a lot of benefits. First of all, the benefits, some of them are, first of all, they're affordable. I don't know, I'm in the construction business, I priced out a lot of second dwellings, and they're not that affordable. How many permits do we have for second dwellings right now?
New.
New?
Currently?
Yeah. Okay, well, they're not like going up like, you know, hotcakes out there, right? They're not, they're not just being built, because they're expensive. Uh, it doesn't really supply affordable housing for, for people, as is, as written right now. So the reason I'm emphasizing this aspect is because I believe this is the only part of it that really deals with affordable housing. The rest of it, most people aren't going to be able to afford, because the build out for, uh, um, and the, the build out for a guest house or a second dwelling will absolutely dictate a higher rent, okay? Now, if you have a, um, a tiny home, you have, first of all, there's affordability. The owner can have it built, they can buy one, and usually they're on the average between, if they're self-built, you can do them for like forty thousand dollars, or you can have them made for like seventy thousand, some, somewhere in that, that bracket, so they're very affordable. Number two, a person doesn't even have to build one and own one, they can rent out to someone that already owns one, and that unit could be pulled onto their property, and they can rent out the site. Now, if they rent out the site and they get the SIR hookup, the SIR hookup would be, let's say it's being financed now by, by, um, Ojai Valley Sanitation District, the average cost is somewhere three hundred plus some change per month, it's being financed at zero percent, uh, financing for five years. So a person can have that hookup, be out of pocket three hundred and something dollars per month, do the development for a tiny home to be placed, which is minimal, because it doesn't require a foundation, it doesn't require a lot of the items that other houses would, and, so let's say that cost is about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, so they're out, that could be financed over five years, so they're out of pocket maybe four, four hundred dollars per month for the first five years to set up that, that, that tiny home. The average cost for renting a tiny home is about five hundred dollars a month for the lot rent. That offsets that cost to have it set up. Yeah, that's one, that's one advantage, so they're, they're quick, there's, there's, they're fast, and there's low-impact development, they're truly low-impact development, sustainable and green designs, they're usually manufactured locally, so you're supporting the local economy. You have, uh, they're usually, the, the community is full of sustainable and green designs, I mean, it's, it's all over that community, it's reflective of the artistic nature of Ojai, these are not mobile homes, and they're not trailers, okay? And there's going to be people attempting to call them that, but you've seen it, we've all seen them, they're not, they're a unique creation, in fact, there are certain jurisdictions that have gone through the process of redefining them as what they are, tiny ho, tiny homes, and they give them their own definition. With that said, I, I believe that it's truly, truly the only affordable housing option that makes any sense to me. So my, my point is I would like to create an ad hoc committee that, that goes over this entire issue, and to see and to develop a, uh, an ordinance of itself for tiny homes that could be incorporated in this, into our, uh, second dwelling ordinance as an option. That's what I, I'd say about that. And I want to open it up to any of you tiny home people, if you want to join in on that.
Well, I think you presented it well. Yeah, I mean, you, you definitely listed the, uh, the advantages of the tiny home. Uh, I guess the question is, um, who would like to be on that ad hoc committee? Besides Chester that sits here.
We're going to sign Mac, because he's not here.
Huh?
We're going to sign Mac, because he's not here.
Yeah, Mac, Mac might, and he might be interested from the sustainability standpoint, I mean, we don't, we won't sign him up, but we'll ask him, and, um, yeah, I, I would be interested.
I think it's.
Rosalie, you, you have an interest in doing that?
I am committed elsewhere.
Okay. Well, that's three, I mean, uh.
Well, possibly three.
I think, possible with Mac.
And an ad hoc committee can be opened up to other people from the community as well, correct? Or is it just part of the planning commission?
Oh, yeah, yes.
They could have meetings like the.
Yeah.
Like Complete Streets does.
Well, now that's different, because Complete Streets are noticed.
That's true, we are noticed.
Well, that's a public.
Yeah, that's different than an ad hoc. Generally, the ad hoc are just, if you're working to develop something.
Right.
You're either council's appointing, you know, the stakeholders, what, whatever, but, you know, um, you have to be careful about that, because, you know, Sheri has to notice the meetings, you have to have, you, you're asking for a commitment of staff time at that point, and that, and that the planning commission cannot do, they cannot, they cannot track staff.
Okay.
Also, at the last meeting, they were going to talk about an ad hoc, something, and our city attorney said it had to be agendized.
Mm-hmm.
Before you could.
That's right.
Well, we created.
You might, you might want to ask if you have an agenda next time.
Didn't we have like a Green Coalition Committee? Uh, what's Mac in charge of?
That was the council that did that.
Okay, sustainability, okay. So how would we go through, how, how would we go about doing that?
Well, I think it's like Sheri said, you need to put it on the agenda, so I can do that. You got it, Sheri, great.
But what?
But it just gets back to everything else, you know, there's a work program that starts, you guys had your joint meeting with city council, and then now this is a shift off those, um, priorities, and so something has to fall off, you know, there isn't additional staff that can be hired to ha, to, you know, so, so there's always, when something is prioritized above something else, something else is falling off, and that really gets down to the work program and the city manager handling his staff.
Well, what, is there a better, I mean, do we really need an ad hoc committee?
Well, I think that it's such a, such a unique situation, that I think it would do it a dis, an injustice to, for us to just.
No, 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 I agree, but why, I'm just saying, maybe there's some split the difference where it's not involving staff.
I agree, I'm open, I'm open.
Maybe we just need to have a presentation next time. Have a presentation by someone here or you, or whoever.
I'm asking what my op, what our options are.
Well, I'm just thinking.
We really need to agendize it, I think if you're going to talk about, you know, right now we're talking about second units, that's what's on the agenda, not, not second tiny homes, you want to agendize it, agendize it for the next meeting, and then you have a discussion about it.
Well, it's up to everyone else, I think they're completely related to the subject.
No, totally, but can we agen, can we, can we agendize it and say a presentation will happen at that time, or is that?
For the next meeting?
Yeah.
Well, the next meeting is, I mean.
Doesn't have to be the next meeting, but.
Set it up.
Okay, sure.
What's that, what happened?
Doesn't have to be the next meeting, it could be, you know.
I think the next meeting's already agendized, pretty much, isn't it?
It's pretty full.
Yeah. But the intent is to follow up on it with a, a more in-depth discussion, right?
Mm-hmm. Um, yeah, but, you know, again, I can't, I, I just got through this on my soapbox for the HPC, you know, just keep in mind, it's me and Sheri, and only me and Sheri for four commissions boards in the city council. You know, I have two part-time planners that help me, there is not, there's not, it's not a call center, and there's not forty people sitting back there, so.
About resources.
It's about resources, and, um, the city council, I mean, the city manager's really clear about making this, that's why we do joint meetings, we set pri, priorities, and, and, um, the two priorities were the second units and sustainable, sustainability, and, you know, if you want to work within the second unit, then that's fine, if you want to start off something different. Like I was trying to explain, when Sheri has these meetings at, like the Complete Streets, they have to agendize, and they have to have an agenda, it has to be out seventy-two hours in advance, we have no, we absolutely have no flex in our work schedules, we're not even making minutes now, because we have so many demands on our time, and that's not just to be defensive, but it just seems like, you know, city managers try to explain this to people over and over again, and there's just kind of, like, it just doesn't resonate that there just really isn't staff to do, to do all these things that are out there.
So I think, Rosalie, were you suggesting something less?
Yeah.
More informal?
More informal, but just as educational, that doesn't, isn't such a protracted process, too. I mean, that you just get, we just need the information.
Right.
You know, so.
So I think we can bypass the staff time just by agendizing it to a discussion item to follow up, and maybe, um, you know, in the, in the background of things, you can be talking to people who might be interested in.
Sure, and get them, and get them organized to present something for that.
Just for our own education, and, uh, we need, that's what, we gotta make our decisions on our facts, that we can make available to us.
I agree, yeah. And I think, can, can we just notice it as a consideration for the public, you know, when we talk about it, so, uh, for the next, whenever the, meet, whatever meeting, that we, we, we state that it's to look at the idea of using, of allowing tiny homes as a second dwelling unit. That's what the discussion is going to be about.
Oh, for a second unit?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Because that's specific to what we're doing, and it's specific to what I would like the public to address.
It bridges it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's do that, then. Deed restrictions is our final category here. Prior to the issuance of a building permit for a second unit, a deed restriction shall be recorded indicating that the use of the second unit as a separate dwelling may only continue if the property is owner-occupied, and the subsequent owners shall be required to maintain the original applicant's responsibility to submit to the city annual statements that the property is owner-occupied. This sort of goes back to the first, very first one, we've full circled, right?
It's, we're okay.
For the hardship, and add the hardship clause.
Right.
The hardship clause will have to be part of that.
Great, okay.
Okay.
So, uh, good job, I mean, we covered a lot of territory. Thank you for your input, folks. Uh, we'll be back at it, as you can tell, this will continue. Yeah, let's.
Sorry, okay, so moving on to the director's decision, so, um, you'll see the first two DEs are the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa, those are not things that you've seen, this, the inn is doing, um, I think five projects, this upcoming closure that they'll have in January, um, one is to the fitness studio, the Libby Market, Golf Pro Shop, what was the other one? Yeah, yeah, Play Office and the salon.
Wow, okay.
So these didn't have, they weren't very minor, um, changes to the exterior, uh, changing of doors and windows and, and a patio area, and if, like a small masonry, or like stucco fencing, um, and they, these were routed up to city councils, our, all DEs were, are, excuse me, and, um, they were just considered minors, so they're here for your information, but, um, they're generally, um, when, you know, they've been doing a lot of improvements to the inn, and now they're, you know, the cafeteria they're doing for the workers that are there, and I think that's really great. And so then moving on, we just have, you know, the addresses that we do assign when we're doing second units, and we said we've got a lot of applications in the last couple days, right before the deadline, and with the program, um, concluding, and then, um, just assign, so there's just minor things that we're working on. Active code enforcement, and, um, again, we're working actively, again, with the city attorney to move some of the cases that we haven't been able to move off our list, he's taken them over for us, and, um, I guess I'm, I'm open to any questions you might have about code enforcement.
What's the, what's the new highlighted areas? The ones in orange.
Returning the, yeah, referring them to city attorney, you know, we're moving, we're trying to move those things off to, we haven't had any luck with them, we're moving them over to the city attorney. Um, our, our goal is to move things that are oldest off the list. And, um, upcoming agendas, you, as we've talked about in the last couple of meetings, January sixth is, is canceled, Friday night is the appreciation dinner for the commission, um, the twentieth is the comprehensive care center replacement, and, um, the concept plan for three, three, four East Ojai. And, um, three, three, four East Ojai is the one that went to city council, it's the area between Bonnie Lou's. She watches me, because I call it Betty Lou's, Bonnie Lou's. And, um, and so they want to come, they want to come before you and, and give you an idea of what they want to do there, to get your feedback on it, you know, and, so we're trying to put that on as sooner than later, because it's really still conceptual at this time. There's another tentative application that we might put on January twentieth, we don't want to put too much, because obviously the hospital is a, a big pending project out there, so we want to make sure that, when they're ready to go, we're ready to handle them. So just looking down the list, um, the rezone of the Bryant Circle area is coming up, and I'm sure that that might be a little bit of work for us. A lot of these are still remain, um, incomplete, the seven hundred San Antonio folks went to HPC last Thursday and gave a presentation, that's, um, the. Fairburn House, so out of our. Okay, the old Wilson property. And so that was an interesting, they're, the house is, um, old and being evaluated for whether it's historic or not, but they gave a presentation, you might want to watch that on tape, just to, um, this will be coming before you, but it was really interesting to kind of see all the, um, the gentlemen that are rehabbing it have quite a long history of rehabbing pretty famous properties, so it's kind, was kind of interesting to hear them talk. Then there's the three, three, four, um, three, four, three, three, four East Ojai again. I think we're moving along on the one, one, one Blanche Street, it was kind of held up because of parking, but I think we've got that kind of resolved, and, um, really, I think that's, I think, um, oh, the Mount Invest Manor modification's going to come back before you again, um, because they can't, they, the fire conditions have changed, and we were concerned about that at the time we brought it, we, we continue to ask people We continue to ask people to have things really hammered out before they bring it to you, because you have to build, and the conditions are what the conditions are. So often we find this, that the conditions you approve, they want staff to modify them, and that's, you know, planning commission conditions aren't modified by staff. That's just the way it works. So it has to come back before you. And finally, I think that might be it, and now we're into your rotation.
Well, let's do the reports first. You had one, planning Complete Streets?
Oh, no, I did it last time, because we didn't meet.
Oh, that's right. Okay. So I don't think there are any reports then to give. There was no...
Well, MAC was supposed to go to the last city council meeting, but he had babysitter problems in the middle. So I didn't, I wasn't really thinking about the liaison role at that point, but I will, I can tell you a couple of things that, they were talking about the vacation rentals. And what was decided was not exactly clear to me. I think that maybe Mayor Lara, or former Mayor Lara, can expound on that a little bit more. The cultural resolution, cultural resources resolution came forward, and it came forward late at night. It was probably eleven o'clock. And the discussion was whether or not there would be any exemptions. And I asked for an exemption for the sewer laterals that now have to be potentially replaced during escrow. And that was a no. But I think that it was a no without really hearing the implications of, you know, where it looks like the process is going to take us and how detrimental it will be. So I would like to see that come back for further discussion.
But she didn't, wasn't speaking as a planning commissioner, but as...
I was speaking as a realtor.
Right.
Yeah, as the president of the Board of Realtors. And so I do think that it will be interesting to see how this plays out in the public, because right now there are no exemptions granted to this policy. And I think it was, it was late at night, and it was heard once. And that's a concern for what, how it's going to hit the public when they realize what, you know, what's involved.
So was the resolution approved then?
Yeah, yeah. So, and then it was midnight, and then I left. And I think more happened after that, but, so that's all I can report.
So that would be it for commissioner reports. So I think we were into our rotation. And I have Commissioner Merk down for city council, January twelfth. Board of Appeals is pending. And the MAC meeting has been canceled. Well, not officially canceled yet, but...
What, are you doing the Board of Appeals? Oh, so you said that...
It's pending.
Okay, because I understood this, you guys did that today. Okay.
Okay. So it could possibly come up in January sometime, correct? Okay.
Tell me if it does, because I'm supposed to be there.
The reason I was bringing it up is because when we talked today, he was thinking, because you've canceled your first meeting in January, see, he wants it on a Wednesday, and he was going to try to do it before you met again. You know, either the week of the sixth, the week of the thirteenth, or whatever. Because he was, for some reason, he thinks it needs to be on a Wednesday. So I just wanted to make you aware that we'll have to call you, because it may be before the next meeting, that you have a BAPs meeting.
So keep Rosalie in the loop on that. Severo, welcome, councilman.
Good evening, Chair Foster, fellow commissioners or commissioners and staff. It is an interesting topic, second unit, that's being talked about. These are units that have potential to be created in our neighborhoods, and what that means, and how that impacts split homes, and guest homes, and mobile homes, and now tiny houses, and how all that's developed. Because like Vina said, there is, and how that is, how that includes affordable housing, because it has a potential, and how second unit is including a housing element as an option for affordable housing, what that really means. So I think that that was an idea that came forward, and Commissioner Merk could probably expand on that and go on how that was introduced in 2004, but it wasn't implemented into 2013. So now we're still working to see what that really means. And so I commend you guys for looking at options, deciding how to move it forward. And it just seemed that, seems like since last year, we have been trying to figure out how everything should be worked out. And it is, I think, it is appropriate that staff is so limited, and for them to try to work things out. I think we do need to figure out everybody's time availability. But when I was on the Park and Recreation Commission, I know we were in the same position about reviewing our master plan, reviewing Zarizodi's master plan. And I know that as commissioners, we took it upon ourselves to start the process going. And now they have staff time allocated to help them and see what they could really do. So there is a process, and I would encourage you guys to keep at it. It is an important issue to really figure out, and it's very complex. According to last city council meeting, what was decided was that the majority of the council did not want any type of residential, any type of vacation or transient rentals in residential zones. That's what was one of the decisions made. Second decision was, Mayor Protim Wyrick came up with this new type of licensing. Now, we listened to his idea about it. So what we directed our city attorney to do was to draft a licensing mechanism that is less restricted than the CUP. That's still up for discussion on where it would be applied. It could be applied to VMU. Again, it's not set in stone. It could be applied to any other zones. So that's a different, a second direction that we sent staff. The third one was, trying to remember on top of my head, I just had...
Something about everybody registering, everybody having to register.
No, that was part of the licensing process, the concept of licensing. The third, oh, the third decision was to actually start enforcement on January 30th. And part of that enforcement, we're going to ask for a subpoena. And so we're just, we're from the Airbnb to see who's operating these vacation and transient rentals, so we could have some tools to enforce the ordinance. So that was the decision on vacation and transient rentals. I know it was a little confusing, because it was really a contested, a hot issue in the community. Yes, commissioners...
Yeah, what did you resolve as far as home sharing goes? Like somebody with a room in their house?
As, I mean, if they're going to rent it, as long as they rent it for at least thirty days...
No problem, but anything less than thirty days, you can't even rent a...
You could probably rent, unless, you just could rent once, for example. It's just what Mayor Blatt says.
Blatt's program. You've got your thirty-day gap. You can do it for three days, or eight, but it has to be one per thirty days.
Yes. That's what we decided on. So no unhosted or hosted vacation rental, as of right now, as we start writing the ordinance. Now, the cultural resource issue was a little confusing. We've developed through our ad hoc committee, we've developed another tool to check where earth disturbing developments could happen. And as of right now, there's a disagreement between the tribal group and staff on certain, that there's certain ministerial projects that are appropriate to have this new tool, which we are calling APA. If you could help me out with the, I'm drawing a blank, the...
Preliminary archaeological assessment of APA.
APA, and it's basically, it's basically does what Chris does, a quick checks of what's around the area. And there's some disagreement on what should be applied, what APA should be applied to, what type of projects it should be applied to. And so we're still trying to figure that out. So my motion was to, for right now, include everything, whether it be ministerial or discretionary, knowing that we're going to come back to council to discuss what the disagreements are. And in that disagreement, I wouldn't necessarily rule out the repairs of existing lines. We just decided not to include it right now. So it's not set in stone. We did, we did agree to move forward and draft, giving the city attorney the direction to draft that resolution. But that doesn't mean that there's not going to be any modification. It could mean that we could add all the ministerial and discretionary projects under there, but it doesn't mean that it's for sure. The second thing that we decided on that item was that in order, right now, we don't have a mechanism to condition ministerial projects, for any ministerial projects. So what we did that night was that we directed the city attorney to include language which would allow staff to condition ministerial projects. Now, we did it in a broad sense, so they could potentially now start conditioning the ministerial project for whatever, if they deemed appropriate. The Miss World, in this case, Miss World deemed appropriate. But it's not going to take into effect until February, because it's still a process, the first hearing, and et cetera, et cetera. It still has to go through all the protocols in order for it to be legal. And so that's an interesting question with the second unit, because there's state law saying that their, that ministerial, so that's something we still have to figure out. But as right now, ministerial projects in other cities do do this, where they do condition, or where some cities do, if they run into an issue, it ups the ministerial project into a discretionary project. So we're still working that out, but we are in the process of wanting to condition some of our ministerial, if appropriate. So those were the decisions on the council. Then we had some closed session items that we met upon, that's why it still went on. But I know it was confusing. We'll still try to get the appropriate communication out to the public, because when you're on the dais, as you guys know, sometimes you're talking amongst your colleagues. And since you read so much on the subject, it's, in your head, it makes sense, but to the public it might not. So it is, it's all part of trying to be as transparent, as clear, as concise with the public while sitting on the dais. Other than that, we have an appreciation dinner. Excited about it. It's been a wonderful year. I thank you guys. It's thankless job that you guys do. And I thank staff for being there, too. So if there's any questions, if not, then a great job, and we'll see you hopefully on Friday.
Thank you. I think we're done.